Good morning, and I would like to welcome everyone who is present in the chamber, and all those who are listening online to the business of the Health Scrutiny Committee for Lincolnshire. I would like to add that for those of us in the council chamber, there is no fire drill planned this morning. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors, through reception, and assemble in the car park at the front of the building and await further instructions. I would also request all members to place their phones on silent and to try and ensure everyone has the opportunity to ask a question, to ask a maximum of two questions per item, and to keep these succinct and concise. However, I will close down the debate to ensure we keep to time if needed, and would ask you indicate early to guarantee your question. As the meeting is being streamed in the usual way, I would like to remind you all that your comments will remain accessible online as the meeting recording remains on the council's website. I'd now like to move into agenda item one, apologies for absence and replacement members. Trina.
Thank you, Chairman. We've received apologies from councillor Lynda Wooton, and we have councillor Stokes as her replacement member. We've received apologies from councillor Cleaver, and we have councillor Dilks as replacement. Apologies from councillor Emily Wood, councillor Lucille Hague, and we have councillor Pesel as her replacement. And we've had an apology from councillor Mrs Eswali, Executive Council of NHS Liaison, Integrated Care System Registration and Coroners, and Liz Ball will be late, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Trina, and welcome to those replacements to today's meeting. I'll now move on to agenda item two, declarations of members' interest. This is an opportunity for members of the committee to declare any pecuniary or other interests. Do members have any interest to declare at this point? Councillor Kendrick.
Thank you, Chairman. I should perhaps mention I'm a stakeholder governor for LPFT.
Thank you, councillor Kendrick, in which case I'll now move on to agenda item three, the minutes. These minutes are on pages three to 14, and it's for the meeting held on the 19th of July. Do I have a proposer that these are correct? Thank you, councillor Atkinson-Sanders. Seconded, councillor Smith, thank you. All those in favour, please show. Those against? And abstentions, please. Thank you. Okay, thank you, in which case they're moved. We'll now move on to agenda item four, the chairman's announcements. My announcements were circulated as part of the agenda, and supplementary announcements were circulated on the 12th of September. I would now like to say a few words about councillor Ray Wooton, who was a county councillor from Grantham North, strongly advocated services at Grantham and District Hospital, in particular campaigning against the overnight closure of Grantham's A&amp;E. Ray's contributions will be missed, and I would like us to stand for a minute's silence in his and councillor Mrs Cavery-Brown's memory, please. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on the announcements? Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. With regards to cascade surgeries, rating of inadequate, this is deeply concerning for all residents impacted, but more so, Chairman, this is concerning across the whole of Lincolnshire as this appears to be emerging as a pattern in recent months, as we've had a number come to this committee, as you'll be well aware, Chairman. This is obviously going to place, or the risk of placing high strain on secondary A&amp;E and other secondary care that, as we all know, won't really be able to absorb any additional strain. Chairman, would we be able to write to the relevant minister or indeed the Care Quality Commission and ask what steps are being taken to rectify these issues and how future issues on this subject can be prevented, as it seems to be an ever-increasing issue when more and more of our GP surgeries are failing in their requirements under the CQC framework?
Yeah, thank you, councillor Smith. I was going to actually say on the work programme that we have a look at bringing cascade into the work programme and have a look at that, but I think in terms of moving forward, it might be a worthwhile conversation to have with the Integrated Care Board initially. I think we did ask a question a while ago now in terms of was there any others that were at risk, and this was one of those that they did highlight was at risk. So they didn't feel there was any others on the radar at the moment in time, but I think it's worth readdressing. So we'll certainly put that up in the work programme, councillor Smith. Councillor Allen, please.
Chairman, it's supplementary announcements, I don't know whether you're carrying those at the same time. I was very pleased to see the new suicide strategy that's been issued this year, bearing in mind that the previous one was about 2012, I think, and from looking at the strategy in detail, it's quite wise, I think, that we have a new one, because the previous one was, had some improvements but not anything significant, I think. So something new needs to actually be put in place, and particularly as things become more difficult, shall we say, in society post-COVID and post the various factors affecting family life and family deliveries. So I'm very pleased to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Any other questions on the announcements or supplementary announcements? Note, in which case do I have a proposer that we note these, please? Councillor Stokes, thank you. Seconded, please. Councillor Kendrick, all those in favour, please show. Thank you, they're supported. In which case we'll now move on to agenda item five, cancer care and living with cancer programme. This item was circulated as part of the agenda pack on pages 23 to 67, and provides an opportunity for the committee to review cancer care for the first time since July 2022. I'd like to welcome our presenters from the NHS Lincolnshire Integrated Board, Claire Rabel, Director for System Delivery, Louise Jean, System Lead for Cancer Care, and I believe on teams we have Chiro Rinaldi, Deputy Medical Director, Amanda Markle, Deputy Chief Operating Officer. If I could ask you to present the report in about five to 10 minutes, please, that'd be much appreciated. Thank you, I'll hand over to you now.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? Okay. So I wanted to thank you today for inviting us to come and present. We obviously came in July last year. I want to give some, an overview really of the background, the impact of COVID, because I know there's new councillors on the, on the committee. We will go into recovery and system performance, and we will look at both Enlag and WAFT, so North West Anglia Foundation Trust, North Lincolnshire and Gaul Hospitals, and we also cover off United Lincolnshire Hospital Trust. We'll look at any future work that's happening, and we will also look at the risks and opportunities that affect us within Lincolnshire. And I also want to bring to the table today the Living with Cancer Programme, which is the personalisation programme that looks after patients living with cancer. There is a lot to go through, so I will try and whizz through it in the 10 minutes that you've told me. Just to give you a bit of background, we are, oh, thank you, thanks. We're, just to give you a bit of background, from a governance perspective, we are governed under the NHS Constitution. The Constitution outlines that patients can expect their rights when they're referred on a cancer diagnosis or treatment pathway. We're also governed under the National Cancer Waiting Times that are nationally driven, and we've made significant efforts into the, address both cancer treatments, cancer care and the treatments through various initiatives and guidelines. We're also governed by the NICE, National Institute for Health and Care Excellence, which is the NICE, and I apologise for all the acronyms if I do say them, I do apologise now. This is developed, these develop guidelines and recommendations for referral diagnosis and treatment, and a management of various cancers. The NICE guidelines are not evidence-based, but will help us inform and dictate clinical practice, and they play a significant role in shaping standards and future practice for improvement in cancer. Just wanted to highlight as well that we currently sit in the tier-two NHS England Oversight Framework, and that supports and guides Lincolnshire to improve cancer services. Enwaft also sits in tier-two, and Enlag at Grimsby, they sit in, they sit in tier-three, but they're not, they're not, they're not monitored through an oversight meeting. Excuse me. So we currently have nine constitutional standards, thank you, Claire. We have nine constitutional standards that are moving in October from nine to three, and the most notable impact that you'll recognise is the removal of the two-week wait standard. The three standards that we will move towards are the 28-day faster diagnosis standard, or the FDS standard, and this allow, this is the standard that is 28 days from receipt of referral from a GP to diagnosis of cancer. The 31-day standard is the standard for treatment from following diagnosis, and the 62-day standard is basically two months from a receipt of an urgent referral to treatment. So in essence, you have 28 days to diagnose, 31 days to treat, and overall 62 days, give or take two days in that pathway. I hope that makes sense. Just wanted to bring and highlight some issues around COVID impact. We are two years on, I realise, from COVID, but we are still seeing an impact through that COVID pandemic. We know that screening services were suspended and scaled back, which were led to reduction in the number of people being screened for our three, so three screening programmes, the breast, cervical and bowel programmes. This had an impact on misdiagnoses and patients not coming forward. Patients with symptoms were deterred also from coming forward during the impact of COVID, due to the fact that they were, they were scared and anxious of coming forward because of cause of infection from COVID. We had diagnostic delays due to social distancing. Endoscopy was stopped for three months, that caused a huge backlog in endoscopy, and this was due to, it was deemed as an aerosol-generated procedure that was deemed too high a risk to proceed. Our theatres and ITU spaces were used for COVID patients, and therefore reduced capacity for treatments and surgery, and patients were generally frightened, they didn't want to come forward, and I think that had a massive impact. Obviously, the main impact from that following COVID was the increase in backlogs, and we've been trying to work through those backlogs since that time. So, recovery. The NHS has continued to prioritise cancer treatment throughout the pandemic against an emerging, increasing demand, basically, through emergency, planned care and other priorities. We have huge workforce challenges in Lincolnshire, and we're consistently seeing high record levels of demand hitting the services, and we've seen that since March 2021. Every year, the National Cancer Team set out a plan, and they, for the last two years, have focused on recovery and getting back to that. It will probably be for the next two years, too, that we will still focus on recovery. The two areas that focused on are around the backlog, so that's patients waiting over 62 days, and we are to reduce this to a position of 217 by March 2024, and a faster diagnosis standard will need to improve by 75% by March 2024. There are other priority, sorry, there are other priorities that are set within the East Midlands Cancer Alliance, who also govern us, and I've submitted that in an appendices in the papers, so you can read that, and that looks at wider, wider issues, wider areas that we tackle around personalisation, health inequalities. So, the backlog. You'll see from the chart in front of you that this is the position for ULHT, it is an unvalidated position, I just want to state that, it is unvalidated data. The red line shows the line from July 2020 through to August position to date. We are currently at a position of 239, which is slightly higher than that red line is on the graph, but we have seen, you can see that we've seen a dramatic reduction in our 62-day backlog. This has unfortunately risen slightly, and that is due to the fact that we've got holiday period over the summer, so people taking holiday, which is absolutely right, but also now this industrial action is having a huge impact. The dotted line is the predicted line that we have set to try and achieve the 217. We have seen that we will increase over the period between now and March, but actually we're trying to maintain that at the 217 or the 220 mark. The graphs, I don't have Enlag or Enwaft, so I do apologise for that, but I can let you know that Enwaft from August 2022 were at 409 patients on their backlog, they are now at 373, and the Enlag position, so North Links and Gaul position from 11th of December in 22 were 159, and we, they have now got to 109. So I just want to recognise that they are great improvements of the backlog. The 28-day faster diagnosis standard allows you to get a diagnosis, or not a diagnosis, of cancer within 28 days, and both those elements are important. It's a very stressful time for patients to go through those pathways. The graph shows the ICB performance, and it's a validated position. The green line is the standard where we need to get to for 75%, and the orange line is the national average, and you can see we're slightly below that. I have to say, the next graph will show you now ULHT's unvalidated performance for, for August, and you can see now that we are working tirelessly to get this to 70%. Our expectation over the next six months is to get to 70% by end of September, 72.5 by December and 75 by March. That will then achieve that standard. I think the ask after that will be to get higher than that from a 28-day faster diagnosis, but that will be set out in the plan for next year. You can see that the, that we've modelled that through for a faster diagnosis, and we are almost there for September. So I think it's, again, it's just recognising it's a good achievement. We also monitor the 104 days. I'm not going to go through a huge amount of this, but you can see the three areas, the three trusts that we follow, we're currently at 95, we're actually at 97 today for ULHT, that's an unvalidated position, but we, what this does is patients who are waiting over 104, which is not good enough, we shouldn't have any patients waiting over 104. We have put some resource in place that supports this, so we have nurses, clinical nurse specialists who are called pre-diagnosis clinical nurse specialists, who support patients in coming forward to go, go for their appointments, basically. And we've also put in place a navigator of 104 days who sorts out the administrative flow for those patients going through these pathways. The 62-day classic referral, treatment to, sorry, from referral to treatment, we have not been monitoring for the last two years, and that was indicated by NHS England. The issue we've got is that, the graph basically shows the performance, and it shows over, over the COVID period. The issue we have is that the impact of backlog as we work through the long waiters has a negative impact on performance. However, as we reduce our backlog, our performance should start to go up. So both from a 28-day and a 62-day performance target, we should see, as the backlog reduces, our performance for classic goes up. So NHS England in August have started to ask us to monitor this more closely, and have asked us to get to 70% by March 2024. Just wanted to clarify that the performance is monitored by the ICB in a number of places, weekly ICB exec meetings, it is updated and presented at a monthly integrated service delivery and performance committee, where the performance data is monitored monthly, which is also a subcommittee of the ICB board, and it also goes to an ICB system quality and patient experience committee, where quality and experience issues are also identified. The Cancer Board also receives monthly performance data, and we receive quarterly reporting data from Enlag, North West Anglia and North Links and Gaul to the Cancer Board. So there are some improvements, and I'm going to whizz through these because they're on screen and they're detailed in the pack, but basically there are a number of performance improvements that we've made across all three areas. So implementation of the new colorectal pathway, implementation of a breast screen pathway, a breast pain pathway, this is reducing demand on services and improving 28-day performance. A staging CT same day following endoscopy is another improvement, which again impacts 28-day performance. Commencing patients around an MP MRI for prostate patients again improves 28-day performance. A new piece of work that is coming for the whole of the nation is the targeted lung health check, which is basically a screening programme for lung patients, and we in Lincolnshire will be doing that. Enwaft has started, and ULHT will be picking that up this year, probably with an 18-month delivery phase. We've also done across Lincolnshire the Galleria trial, which is a new blood test, basically to detect cancer, and hopefully that will be brought in as an additional screening programme in a number of years once the research is finalised. And we're also increasing capacity for one-stop neck lumps within, with Enwaft. And Enlag, there's again improvements around upper GI two-week wait pathway, straight to test, and that impacts again on 28-day. There's protected slots for navigational bronchoscopy being worked up with the Hull Teaching Hospitals. This is about taking, taking days off the pathway so that a plan is in place for September. There's a joint piece of work with pathology around biomarker testing, which is planning to bring, this is done externally at the moment, and we're planning to bring this in-house. This will support both the breast and lung pathways, but reduce turnaround times from 19 days to three to four days, which will take off 14 days off that pathway, which is significant from a, a long waiters, basically. Urology, two-stop clinic will be in place to support MP MRI, working to increase capacity for biopsies and biopsy turnarounds, and then everyone is working on the best practice time pathways which support 28-day standard. There's also a joint transformation plan with the Hull University Teaching Hospital and the pathway for cross-organisational boundaries, and they're looking at upper GI, head and neck gynaecology and urology. So within ULHT, which is where obviously my main focus is at the moment, is implementation, we have achieved the colorectal best time practice pathway, sorry, the rapid access colorectal pathway, which has achieved improved performance in backlog but also 28-day. We're redesigning the lung pathway to take off days off the pathway at the beginning so that we can get patients within 28 days for the lung pathway, and that's due to start in September. We've got a gynaecy post-menopausal, post-menopausal bleed pathway, which again is looking at 28-day performance, and that is due to, that is in at the moment as a pilot phase, but will be planned to go to full rollout by September, October. We also did the Galleria trial. We have at the moment, led by Amanda, who's on screen, the intensive support programme focusing on delivery of reducing backlog and faster diagnosis standard, the 104 days, and now the classic. And again, I said the path links. I just wanted to emphasise that that amount of improvement is a huge piece of work, not just working on 28-day standard but, and the backlogs, but adding in these additional bits, working with teams tirelessly to try and improve those pathways for patients. Future work, plan to set out, the plans are set out every year by NHS England, and as I said, that we're planned to probably do trajectory and recovery for the next two years. This will, the above will make up part of the plan alongside the recovery programme. We're also supported by East Midlands Cancer Alliance, who provide us with a service development fund, and we receive this funding each year to support the programme of work. We received approximately around three million this year, which we've supported into pathways and improvements across Lincolnshire. You'll know that we have challenges and opportu, well, we've got, we've got massive challenges across our pathways, and it's fair to say that we're, cancer services are not, we're not the only ones, there's, there's challenges across all, all areas. I think the main challenges that we face significantly impact services, improving service, are the challenges worsened by our geography and poor infrastructure, our travel, getting patients to hospitals is really important, and we need to be able to support patients to do that. We've got ongoing challenges we face currently through industrial action at the consultant sites and the junior strikes. They're positioned in, at the moment impacting hugely on performance and staff's time. Workforce challenges, attracting, recruiting, retaining staff in Lincolnshire is key, we need to grow our own, and we have some issues around out of county, so our specialist services that go out to tertiary pathways, it's accessing those and getting patients to those in a timely manner. I won't run through the opportunities, but you can see that they're on the screen and in the paper as well. Just want to briefly come on to the Living with Cancer Programme. So this is the, what I call the softer metrics, this is the, the personalisation programme that allows us to support patients who have had a diagnosis of cancer, who then go out into the community, which is a very frightening time for people to then be managing their condition without the support of the hospitals. The Living with Programme aims to develop a personal-centred approach for patients living with cancer and significant others living in Lincolnshire, so it's a wider programme. We're implementing personalised follow-up pathways and personalised care across the acute services and into communities for people with cancer pathways across the whole geographical area of Lincolnshire, as well as supporting patients treated in ULHT. We are working with neighbouring trusts such, who live in Lincolnshire, for patients living in Lincolnshire, Enwaft, Leicestershire, Nottinghamshire and Enlag, North Links and Gaul. So recent improvements, we have developed three strategies to support this programme, the Living with Cancer Strategy, the Integrated Workforce Strategy, and now a development with a digital strategy. We also reviewed the National Cancer Patient Experience Survey, and that showed an increase that we've got last year's, last year we had a patient satisfaction score, and we developed an integrated action plan to improve that. We are currently reviewing this year's scores, and then we can bring that back to you. We've recently developed a Living with Cancer dashboard, and able to demonstrate the impact using qualitative and quantitative data, which is really important at this, at the back end of this pathway, and it's been received regionally and has been demonstrated to other trusts across the region and further afield. Just a bit of a celebration, and we don't do this very often, is that my team were awarded with a National Macmillan Excellence Award at the integration category for the Macmillan Professionals Conference in November, and we've been asked back this year to approach, to present three Macmillan webinars and three workshops with two posters at the forthcoming Macmillan Conference in November in Glasgow. We've also, another bit of celebration, we've been recognised nationally, internationally, Cathy McPeak, Macmillan Living with Cancer, Cancer Programme Manager, presented in Milan at an international psycho-oncology symposium with other colleagues across Lincolnshire and the university, so it's just a great celebration. And just to say, our engagement with patients across the system, we have two co-production groups, one in Sleaford and one in Mabelthorpe, they continue and will continue throughout, and we also have a cancer patient expert reference group that is based within ULHT. Recent improvements, should we say? Sorry. We, we've increased, I think the recent improvements that we've got are around holistic needs assessments, which is assessing patients' needs, and the end-of-treatment summaries, and the personalisation programme. It's split into recent improvements, again, I just wanted to say that we've got, we've got 1,400, oh, I've lost my page now, we've got, we've, we've mapped assets of 1,400-plus that are now on Lincolnshire Connect's support website, that support patients throughout the, the programme. We've got, we've linked with Fighting Fit, which is the link to the, sorry, just lost my page. We've linked to Lincoln City Foundation, and we've got five Fighting Fit sessions across the county, Mabelthorpe, Gainsborough, Grantham and Boston, and we're hoping to develop other sites further. We're also looking to implement National Trust fitness sessions at Belton House and other National Trust sites. The psychological emotion support is completely, is, is a really important part for patients living with cancer, and we're trying to provide that support across. We've got now 3.2 whole-time equivalent psychologists and a video therapy support service to support patients living with cancer with psychological motion support. And then, future work, I won't go through, you can read that, but I just wanted to come on to the last bit. So in conclusion, the state of cancer care in Lincolnshire shows sustained signs of improvement, however, there's acknowledgement that still work to be done in order to meet the desired standards of care for Lincolnshire and the, Lincolnshire and cancer patients in the county. The healthcare professional organisations involved in cancer care for the patients of Lincolnshire are passionate about their work and dedicated to making future improvements. There is a recognition that gaps exist in the current cancer care system, and the efforts are being made to address them. The aim is to provide more integrated and comprehensive and comprehensive care to cancer patients in Lincolnshire. The collaboration and integration is key to this, and I think we are starting to bridge those gaps. We are working very closely with our wider integrated care system colleagues. We're working together to strive continued improvement and a goal to ensure cancer patients in Lincolnshire receive the best possible care throughout their journey. And the commitment to ongoing progress and dedication of the passionate teams involved in cancer care and the county are driving, making improvements across. So apologies for flying through that.
Okay, thank you. I think you did really well. Under the circumstances, there was a lot of slides to cover, so, well done. Right, I'll open up to questions. I've got Liz first.
Didn't realise I was going first, but thank you for your presentation, Louise. Obviously, I'm here with my Elfwatch hat on, and it's a two-part question, really. Obviously, we've got the new standards now, and you've obviously described a lot of improvements that you're making, which is, you know, really pleasing to hear, both in terms of monitoring the performance standards and the psychological support. But how do you feel that is going to impact on the outcomes for patients at the end of the day? So how will we know that patients in Lincolnshire are having better psychological support, and actually they're going to, you know, have better outcomes from their cancer treatment overall? Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. So I think there's some, there's specific pieces of work that we do that try to measure impact. The Living With Cancer dashboard is an example of that. What we're trying to do is translate that in, from a qualitative perspective into how we can improve. And that, that piece of work that we've done through the development of that dashboard starts to collect some of that patient experience. It is slow, it's not something that we do very well, but I think there's pieces of work that we're doing. So I'll give you an example. Colorectal, at the moment, we have changed the pathway quite dramatically, and we have gone out to patients for their experience post. We didn't get a pre, but we've got a post. And what that's doing is providing feedback around the whole pathway, which is really good. That doesn't necessarily measure impact. Some of those patients won't have cancer, but it's about the experience that they get along that journey. And that's key for me. So I think what we need to do is more of those, to really hone out that impact and hone out what we, what we need to do differently. Does that answer your question?
In part. It was just the second part about the changes to the pathway, how are we going to know that actually, whilst you've described the experience, the actual outcome of reduction in, I guess, mortality?
Yeah, so our aim for 2028 is to get to improve staging. And so the, the theory around 28-day standard is that we get patients diagnosed within 28 days, and then hopefully onto treatment within 62. If we can get those patients through those pathways in that time, they have got a much greater chance of getting an early diagnosis.
councillor Allen.
Thank you, Jim. I was interested in the last comment. Obviously, the important, I think, is to try and get people through your various pathways as quickly as possible, so that either minds can be put at rest or treatment can take place as quickly as possible, because presumably the quicker it takes place, the more likely hold there is of a positive outcome, either in terms of dealing with the cancer or prolonging or providing extra lifetime. The two questions, there's two questions I've got from the, from the report that's been provided, and it's to do with the 62-plus backlog reduction, and virtually a step change that took place at the end of 22, beginning of 23, virtually a step change over a three-month period. Has any analysis taken place to actually find out what that is, rather than some form of redefinition of what we're talking about in terms of 62-plus backlog? And there's this sort of follow-up question to that, that I couldn't make sense of in terms of reading through the report, and you may be able to advise me, is that if there has been this sort of step change, almost step change reduction in the backlog position, why it isn't appearing in the graph that we have on our page 28, which is to do with the referral to treatment target? Because you would think, you know, if you're reducing the backlog, there would be some improvements in referrals for treatment, but that doesn't seem to be appearing at all. And indeed, referrals to treatment, which presumably is fairly key to actually providing what we've just been talking about in terms of more lifetime, or actually dealing with the cancer, doesn't seem to be actually significantly improving at all. It's nowhere near the target.
I think the two points you make are really valid, so I'll try and explain. So the 62-day backlog reduction, you see the dramatic step change that you recognise on the pathway. We actually implemented the rapid-access colorectal pathway. We had a huge backlog of patients on the colorectal pathway, and what, what that did was it removed those patients off the pathway. We probably had 80% of patients on the colorectal pathway that weren't, shouldn't have been there, weren't diagnosed as cancer. So what we've done is we've refined that pathway to allow patients to streamline those patients. So the demand isn't coming through the door, and we can then treat those patients in a timely manner. So that's the step change that you see.
Sorry, chairman, before you do go on, so that, you know, I have got the clarity that I need. I'm not an expert in this by any means at all. So fundamentally, there was a lot of people on the 62-plus list that shouldn't have been there.
Yeah, completely. And so, but what we do is we try and encourage patients, we don't discourage referrals through. So our GPs, we're encouraging GPs to identify cancer. And if they're, if they follow the NICE guidelines and they indicate that they've got an issue, then we would ask for those referrals to come in. So the backlog, yes, but you're right is that, you know, only 10% of our patients on our pathways will ever go through to have a cancer. So it's just recognising that we will have more patients on the backlog or the pathways that don't have cancers. Yeah.
Just to add, if I may, just, so it wasn't that they were wrong, they were right at that time, because that's what was the pathway at that time. What we've done is changed the pathway, so those patients are streamed out in a different way. So I don't want people to think that GPs were incorrectly referring. They were correct at that point in time. We've now changed the pathway, because we recognised we could do something different with a cohort of patients. And that was something that was being done nationally, and we've kind of followed suit. So just to clarify that point, it was a specific intervention that we did.
Sorry, chair, if I can follow up on this. I think what you're saying is that something took place to actually determine whether they should be on the pathway or not.
So guidance came out that we used what's called a FIT test, and that FIT test was being used for all patients. And if that FIT test was positive, then those patients should have been on the pathway. Some of the patients prior to that didn't have a FIT test and weren't positive.
All right. So we've reduced the backlog list by taking people off, and so that we can concentrate on those people that should be on. And that's why, in effect, then, that the, the second graph that I referred to hasn't shown any significant change at the moment, because it's those people that are being referred to treatment that are in that list, and that's not really showing any improvement at the moment. Is that right?
It is not showing improvement. The reason being is that, and I tried to describe that in my presentation, I probably didn't do that justice, is that as we work through long waiters, so the longest waiters on the pathway, and we remove those off, that has a direct impact on performance for our 62-day performance, our classic standard, which is the graph you refer to. So it's going to take time for that to improve. And we've got to get to a balance where we get our backlog down low enough for then, for us to be able to then improve that performance.
Is it just the long wait? The long wait has been 104 days, sort of thing, is it?
No, is any, any patient over 62?
Over 62, right. Well, I think the next one you'd count is up to 104 or something.
Can try and, if we can try and keep it, so it's not a conversation back and forth. Thank you.
No, but I'm just trying to understand the information that's been provided to us. So the treatment of those longer-term ones is having an impact, then people are moving closer and closer towards the 62 days, is it? And are you actually trying to deal with some of the early ones as well, which sort of leaves this area in the middle, that perhaps is suffering a bit?
We are. And the reason Louise explained earlier on in the presentation, the reason nationally they stop monitoring that second graph you're referring to is because it doesn't tell you anything at the moment. Till you clear the backlog, it's kind of almost an irrelevant standard in respect, because everyone's over 62 days, or the majority are. So obviously, doing the work that Louise has described will mean we're treating people earlier, so they don't even get to the 62. But at the moment, until we clear that backlog of 200-and-odd over the 62, we won't see that improvement in that standard.
Chairman, sorry, I would just say that we did say that at the beginning of this discussion, the earlier the better. Thank you. Councillor Kendrick, please.
Thank you, chairman. If I could ask a couple of questions, I'm sure Louise will be aware of the report, that was a joint report with the NHS Confederation and the Association of British Pharmaceutical Industry, that was published in January regarding survival rates. And it said that nine in 10 cancer survival rates were worse than in Europe. And it put that down to a sort of conservative attitude towards innovation with new drugs. I'm just wondering if you can give me any information as to how that might be progressing now. And secondly, the Galleria trials, they sound very interesting. I was just wondering if you have any information on the success or otherwise of those trials. Thank you, chairman.
For the first question, I'm going to defer to a friend, and I wonder whether Chiro could come in on that. But do you want me to just continue with the Galleria? So the Galleria trial, we don't have any, we know that 92% of our patients who were invited in Lincolnshire turned up this time. We had, I think, 89% turn up last year. They're currently evaluating that, but it looks like it's a positive outcomes from, it'll be a complementary screening programme that will run alongside our three screening programmes, and it'll be for patients over the age of 50, we think. But again, we've got another year of the trial and then evaluation. But it is a national programme, it's international, so it's been done in America and here. And I'm going to try and pull Chiro in for the first question.
Happy to answer if people can hear me.
We can hear you.
Thank you. So for the first question, I think, I think overall data are improving in terms of survival. And that is, in general, in relation to the fact that we are able to open more clinical trials with the new molecules that the councillor was talking about. So yes, the process of approval of new drugs is slightly more complex in the UK compared with the rest of Europe, because we wait for regulatory body, you know, to pass different checkpoints. So from FDA, you go to European, and then it comes into UK. So there is a delay in that prospect. But to try and enact on some of it quicker, more clinical trials are open to confirm data that perhaps Phase One, Phase Two clinical trials on the same molecules and component, you know, have been launched in other countries. So in other words, yes, there is, there is work to do. But there is signs of improvement in terms of survival in cancer because of that. In different type of tumour site, the access of new molecules is still not widespread in the country. So that is a reality. So there are places where clinical trials are open more quickly, and the access on those drugs are easier for patients at different stages. But we are seeing an improvement, and there is a lot to work in the background to try and facilitate that process. NICE, which is the body that approved most of those new drugs, had a backlog, and that is again a consequence of some of the effect of the pandemic, you know, in the two years that we had pandemics, a lot of the process and approval application were postponed to facilitate some of the drugs, you know, for the pandemic as well. And they are working through some of it. So I'm not sure I answer completely. I think my perspective is there is a slower process of approval when the drug has been already approved, and that has to be acknowledged by NICE. So there's some work in progress to try to make happen. But to open site, more clinical trials are open to utilise those drugs when, when there is a gap in the approval process.
Thanks very much. It does sound as though something is happening, shall we say, in that respect. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kendrick. I've got councillor Smith next, please.
Thank you, chairman. Excuse me. Chairman, I, and I know this is above our, gone above our heads, as it were, but I do have concerns that the two-week standard has been removed for patients around their first appointment to when they are due to be seen as an outpatient from their referral. I believe we should record these concerns with the appropriate individual, be that the minister or whoever is the relevant individual. Additionally, chairman, I've read through that document very carefully into, and I'm not in any way decrying the work that's being done by the staff who are doing a very good job in very difficult circumstances with a very, very large backlog. But I can't see, as councillor Allen was trying to allude to, I think, where patients who are, who have already been waiting a prolonged and protracted period of time are getting any, any better chance of not having to wait much longer. It's still a problem. They're still there on a timeline, a time bomb potentially, and it's a very serious problem. And mentally, for patients, it must be very, very difficult, even if we, as we've been told, the percentage that will have a diagnosis. The fact you don't know if you will have that diagnosis is hugely debilitating, and I can only imagine what that, that does. On the point that was just raised by councillor Kendrick, and I don't know if it's my ears and the fact it was over teams, is it correct that we are waiting on the FDA and the Europeans to approve things before we do, chairman? Because that's what it sounded like when it, that question was raised. Because if that is the case, chairman, that is disturbing, to put it mildly. We have our own regulatory bodies that deal with this. We should not have to wait for a body outside of country to regulate something themselves, so then we go through another stage and regulate. That's what they're there for. If the regulator can't do that, then, to be frank, chairman, what's it there for? We may as well say to the FDA, please regulate our drugs if our regulator can't do that, if that's what was said. If it wasn't, then I stand to be corrected, but that's what it sounds like, chairman. And finally, very briefly, chairman, with your indulgence, I'd be very interested if we could be kept up to date with the comorbidities work around cancer that's alluded to in the report, because I think that's very important. And that might, if sufficient research is done, also provide new data and reasons as to why people potentially have the diagnoses and the cancers that they do. And I think it'd be important that we're kept up to date with that. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got Chiro first, I think, and then I'll come back if you'd like to.
Just a very quick response to that. And yes, unfortunately, the process of approval of cancer drugs has always been this. So you always have an FDA approval first. Even Europe follow FDA. So it's more recently that things are moving slightly differently. And I guess the major reason is because most of the pharmaceutical companies are American-based, and also because the regulator in the States, you know, tend to come up with the approval earlier on. And also because the system in the States is very different in terms of healthcare providers. So, you know, once the FDA say yes, then, you know, private insurance and provider are happy to refund the cost of the drugs. So unfortunately, this, this is how it works. What NICE does is to double-check, because there's been cases where FDA might have approved drugs, and then, you know, clinical trials run in the UK, and to confirm the value of that medication, might have found some issue, and then revert back to the FDA approval, and then, you know, pause for some of it. So I think it's healthy that there are more than one regulatory body, especially for drugs so complex, because some of those problems have been developed, have been found later on in the process.
Thank you. Do you want to come back on the other points, councillor Smith?
Yeah, just to, I suppose, give you some reassurance, is that really at any one time, we have about 3,000 patients on our list with, who are on cancer pathways, whether they're diagnosed, undiagnosed. We were up at 660 patients, we are now down to 239, I think it is today. So I think we just recognise that that's a huge achievement. But I do completely understand that, you know, we don't want backlogs, we don't want patients waiting over 104 days or 62 days. So we do recognise that. I think we can pick up that comorbidities piece of work, so I'm happy to do that. I can't really comment on the two-week wait, that was a national mandate. on the two-week wait. That was a national mandate. Yeah. Many thanks.
Yeah, briefly.
Thank you, chairman, for being indulgent on the point that Chiro's made on the FDA chairman. And I find that absolutely staggering. I'll be honest, that to me is, yes, they may have the company, but actually, and yes, it's right that we double check. I don't decry the double check. What I decry is we're waiting on another country's regulator to regulate before we even move, which clearly shows and highlights the point that councillor Kendrick made. That is why our survival rates are where they are, because we're waiting on other regulators to do a job our regulator should do itself, and then check on top of that, notwithstanding where the drugs come from, chairman. And I think that's actually very serious. And we need to be speaking to MPs, ministers and others on this, because I have no idea that's how the process worked. And I find that absolutely staggering. I really do.
Thank you councillor Smith. I wouldn't disagree. councillor Bessell.
Thank you, chairman. Just a quick question regarding the current state of the strike action and its impact on the targets. Has, what is the sort of level in terms of increases in the backlog that are now filtering through? And what sort of resilience is being put into the system to try and mitigate the impact of this now that we've got consultants and juniors striking? Has there been an uptick due to the consultants joining in the process? And if so, to what degree?
Thank you. I'm going to call on Amanda to give an answer to that, if that's possible.
Can you hear me okay, everybody?
We can, thank you.
Right. Thank you. So we work really hard to make sure that the consultant and junior that strike doesn't have an impact on our patients that are on a cancer pathway. We measure, at every strike, we measure the number of patients that have been cancelled that are on a cancer pathway, be that two-week wait, 60 days, 104 days. That's part of a national submission that's submitted daily. So we know the numbers that are cancelled. They are normally single numbers over that period of strike action. So for instance, last time, there were six patients that were cancelled that were on a two-week wait pathway, and they were all rebooked rapidly. We also measure the number of patients that have been unable to have their endoscopy that are on a cancer pathway as a result of the strike. And again, you know, we know that cohort, and we make sure that they are booked in very quickly afterwards. The way that we are trying to now, I think, strike now has become a normal part of our, unfortunately, our working month. So we're now trying to bring forward, put on additional lists, make sure prior to strikes or after strikes, we've got additional capacity, so that that doesn't impact on our patients on a cancer pathway. I will say, though, it's not without its challenges. And as Louise said in her presentation, we're also working very hard to make sure that our patients that are on a routine pathway, so what was called an RTT pathway, are treated quickly. So we've got a cohort of patients still that are at 78 weeks. And we need to get that down to 65 weeks over the next coming months. And so it's very, very challenging to make sure that both of those cohort of patients are treated in a timely manner. And it will continue to be, we're going into uncharted territory with both the consultant and the junior striking on the same day. We saw last time that around 30% of our consultants strike, and about 80% of our juniors strike. So, you know, circa less than half of our workforce potentially going to be at work for one day, a medical workforce. So that is going to be a challenge. But as I say, we're working, we're working hard in advance to make sure that there will be no impact to those patients on the cancer pathway. Hopefully, I've answered your question. But if not, please let me know and I'll clarify further.
No, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I've got councillor Parkin next, please.
Sorry, your microphone's not on for some reason.
I've only been here 12 years. The really good presentation, really, really interesting to listen to. I am also really interested in terms of psychological support for families. So I've got a question and then an observation. I think we also need to think about families as well, because the psychological impact on families. And I'm not sure of the pathway for supporting families, particularly young people whose parents are suffering from cancer. I know that for young people, there will be school support, obviously. But I'm also interested in whether there's kind of community support for them in terms of peer support. Because I think, I know sadly from family experience, that it's actually incredibly isolating as a young person to have a parent at any stage of that cancer journey. And it's very bewildering and very frightening, even after recovery. And in fact, I think there's a level of trauma for a young person who has gone through that, regardless of the outcome. Secondly, it's kind of, I don't know if I should have declared an interest, but my other professional hat is a funeral celebrant, which I will be leaving early for the beating for again, Carl, because I've got a service. And I just want to say really, really well done. Because when I'm going around and I'm travelling around, and I'm meeting obviously families who are the other end of their cancer journey, and the sad end of the cancer journey. And one of the questions I always ask them is, is there anybody you would like me to thank in the service for their support? And your name comes up time and time. Macmillan's name comes up time and time and time and time again. And it's really interesting to listen to this, having that understanding of what those families have been through, and just how grateful they are for that support. And particularly when the national and the local picture is so challenging. I know that the impact you're having is profound. I just wish I had more confidence in the diagnostic and the earlier stages of patients' journey.
Thank you. Just to give you an understanding of, I suppose, the process in which psychological support, so as a patient goes through a treatment journey, their health needs, their holistic needs are assessed. And if there is an indication that there is a need for psychological support, then that is identified. And the scale of that is then assessed, I suppose, and then put forward for further support. We do, up until Macmillan invested in our psychological support service last year, we only had one psychologist. We now have 3.2, which is really good. But what we need to understand is how we assess and direct patients to support groups, to counselling, to other, not just psychology, not just psychology input. Self-help is often a key to some of these. And we just need to direct patients into that. And that's what that Living With Programme is doing.
And as well as the patients, what about the support for the extended family, particularly the young people?
Yeah. So extended family, yes. Younger people, I think that's a gap for us at the moment. So I probably need to just address that. But I think the, certainly for carers, family members and carers, they are included in that. I haven't actually gotten any examples of where we've supported younger people.
Chairman, can I ask that we somehow keep a check on that, tab on that? Because there must be hundreds, thousands of young people in Lincolnshire who are living with a family member who has cancer. And it is profoundly difficult for them in all aspects.
Well, take that on board. Thank you councillor Parkin. I've got two more speakers, then I'm going to close down the debate with a couple of questions myself. So I've got councillor Mackinson-Sunders, and then I've got councillor Rogers off.
Well, I do know there are support groups for children. I know of one in Louth that works really well. And they help people with life-limiting illnesses. So it does work in some places. What I was going to ask you was, I know survival rates aren't particularly brilliant in this country. But given that we have a lot of people who live in deprived areas, who are presenting late, which then provides, then you have more difficult problems, how do we get those, how do we actually get those people into a system quicker? And I know that's a million dollar question. But that is a challenge. And I don't know if you have hotspots in Lincolnshire where you can identify that people are slow at coming forward, because there might be ways that the community can work together to get people through into your system. And the other question I was going to ask was about how you interact with charities such as St Barnabas and things. And perhaps, you know, chemotherapy can be done on a more localised basis. Because I know travelling in Lincolnshire is a bit of a challenge as well. Thank you.
So we are doing a piece of, so yes, we recognise that there are the deprivation areas across Lincolnshire. And you're correct in thinking that their diagnosis is generally later, and their stage is often impacted on that. We are doing a big piece of work at the moment around the colorectal pathway, looking at, and it's just, we're just about to kick it off, but we're using co-production. So we're going to, we're understanding the seven most deprived practices in Lincolnshire, to understand why they don't come forward for screening, particularly colorectal screening at the moment. That may increase to breast and cervical. But what we're doing at the moment is trying to work with those, through co-production, work with those deprived areas and the people within those areas to understand why they don't come forward, whether that's travel, whether that's language barriers, whether that's just not wanting to come, whatever it might be. So we're going to work through that. And that's very much in its infancy at the moment. But that is a piece of work that we've decided to take forward, to try and monitor that impact and understand it. So charities, so St Barnabas sits within the palliative care and end of life, which sits outside of my programme of work. I don't know whether you want to.
Yeah, we do really close working with the voluntary sector and all charities. So St Barnabas are part of our integrated care system in Lincolnshire, as are many other voluntary sector providers. And we work with them really well. So it is something that we do. It's something we could do more of, I think, particularly in communities. I think we did really well with that in Covid as a country, didn't we? And I think there's some targeted work we can do on a number of programme areas, actually, around working greater with communities. So we have that, we have that on our radar.
And do you have any experience of setting up support groups that we could use in our community hubs? And that you, don't bother telling me here, but if you want to get in touch with me, that'd be really useful. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got councillor Rogers next, please.
Thank you, chairman. Following on from comments that councillor Parkin made, I am happy to say I am a cancer survivor 18 years ago. I experienced the most wonderful treatment at County, but support. At the time, all the focus was on me as a patient. And what was realised by a wonderful Macmillan nurse that I had, it was the family, not just my husband, but it was the whole family that suffered as a result of it. And it wasn't, the support for families wasn't available then. I mean, 18 years ago was a long time. But it is absolutely crucial that this support is offered to everybody. And if I may say so, after the patient has finished treatment. And it's the oddest thing to say, that when you are not the focus of attention, and, you know, you're just having your usual checkups, you feel lonely. And you, it's the weirdest, so the support needs to be for a long time after the patient has finished treatment, but crucial for the families. You mentioned councillor Parkin, young children, but it extends to the whole family. So that really must, you know, continue and be of prime importance. Thank you.
Thanks. If I could just come back on that, you're absolutely right. I think Louise described it as a softer metric earlier. But and often, because it's not a performance metric, it does get overlooked. But it's hugely important. And Lincolnshire Integrated Care Board, we were given funding from Macmillan to do the Living With Cancer Programme over a kind of three to five year period. And we actually invested in continuing the programme in Lincolnshire. Last year, we made that investment to do exactly what you said, to make sure we're continuing the support, but we're starting to widen out further. So absolutely, we agree with you.
Okay, thank you. I've got councillor Delks.
Very kind, chairman. Thank you for allowing me to comment and ask a question. And I deliberately, sorry, I deliberately waited until the end of the debate. I'm new to this. It's my first meeting. I've not been to a health scrutiny meeting before, as you know, chairman. And I'm simply substituting for a colleague. But wow, what a, what an opening, you know, to seeing the work that this committee does. Just absolutely amazing. And listening to the work, you know, it's just mind numbing, actually. And very powerful, I've got to say, the debate that's just gone on. And, you know, yes, thank you for the report that we've sort of heard about. We all know it's about, you know, saving lives and quality of life for everyone. But I did have a sort of a question, and I really welcome the debate that's gone on and the contributions. But I think my sort of, you know, the bottom line seemed to be, to me, about, and I welcome what councillor Smith said about, you know, losing some of the target, the two-week wait standards. But it does go back to those three new measures that you're going to be measured on. And I'd just like to sort of ask really, are they, in your view, realistic for Lincolnshire, given current resources, you know, going in? If they are, when do you expect to achieve them? And sorry to, if it's, I don't want to go back to old ground. But which one of those, I think I know where you're going to go. But which one of those is really the most challenging? I did smile to myself when I read the opening of paragraph eight that says, cancer services in Lincolnshire and nationally are not without challenge. Wow. We've heard about it. But thank you.
Thank you. So I, we recognise that there is a hugely challenging position. The intensive support that we're giving at the moment is supporting that improvement. So I think the 28-day standard is probably, the two most challenged are the 28-day and 62. I think we can, we can, we're pretty much achieving the 31-day standard already anyway. So that's the treatment standard. It's getting the patient diagnosed. It's making sure that we have the workforce in place to do the reviews, to make sure we can move patients on or off that pathway. We need the diagnostic tests in place so that we can do diagnostics to confirm whether it is or isn't a cancer. And we need pathology turnaround. They are some of the key factors that impact on 28-day standard. Once we get them on a 28-day standard, then we need, we also need the impact, or reduce the impact and the improvements of the tertiary pathways. So some of our patients for areas such as lung, colorectal, upper GI, go off to other tertiary sites, so such as Nottingham and Sheffield. So we just need to make sure, we have to line our ducks in a row to get them over the line, basically. Yeah.
If I could just add one other thing that I would say is the, whilst we're mitigating the industrial action at the minute as best we can, that is probably our most significant risk, because they've just clearly had another six-month mandate of strikes. And the joint strike action, as Amanda said, is new territory. So that's a risk that, you know, we do note that is out with our plan at the moment.
Well, thanks for that, chairman. I mean, I think we would all wish to say, you know, let's hope that the strikes can be settled very, very soon, one way or another. But thank you.
Thank you. In which case, I've just got a few questions myself. So looking on page 28, at the 62 and 104-day backlogs, Enlag seem to be performing far better in terms of reducing the weights. Have there been discussions on how their approach differs to ULHDs, and potentially what lessons could be learnt?
So yes, there has. We meet with Enlag very regularly to understand. And we steal with pride anything that we can do. So the colorectal pathway, we looked at that. That was one of the things that they'd already implemented. We, just to give consideration, their And we, just to give consideration, their total patient tracking list size is, ours is around 3,000. Theirs is about half that. So in relative, it's just to understand the relative terms of the numbers that go through. We have a lot of activity within ULHT that goes through that, goes through the pathways. They have less activity and therefore less backlogs, if that makes sense. It's relative.
Yeah, thank you for that. Page 31, can you please expand on the challenges faced with digital initiatives and electronic record implementation? And where you are now in regards to this?
Yeah. So one of the challenges is, so United Lincolnshire Hospitals Trust are, will be moving on to a new electronic patient record. So currently, a lot of their records are paper based or on old systems. Whereas many other trusts have moved that. They have now been given the funding for that nationally to move. Obviously, that's a challenge in itself in making that happen. But it will improve because it improves the administrative flow, which is not very often spoken about. But it is a real challenge when you're working on multiple systems to try and pull data together.
Thank you. And page 31 again, what are the gaps that exist currently? What effort is being made to improve this? And what are the associated timescales for improvement?
Do you mean in respect to digital, councillor May?
Sorry, yes.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's fair to say we are probably not where we need to be in terms of digital in Lincolnshire, across the board, not just around how we support cancer patients. And I think there is a lot more we can do around telemedicine and other initiatives that will help support. So I think that's something we'll need to bring back to you when we've got some firmer digital plan for Lincolnshire as an ICS as a whole, but particularly how it impacts for cancer.
Thank you. That would be useful. And my final question is, on page 30, what is the current situation in regards to the vacancy numbers and in turn recruitment?
I wonder whether I can bring Amanda in on that.
Is that a general question in terms of current nurse vacancies, medical vacancies within the organisation? Or specific to cancer?
Specific to cancer.
Yeah. I don't think we've got the data broken down specifically to vacancies in cancer, but they're very, very small numbers in terms of Macmillan or the team that Louise talked about earlier, that outreach is to patients in the community that are reluctant to engage. Likewise, the staff that work in the cancer team are generally well staffed. So I don't, we can bring that to a future meeting. Claire might know a bit more specific detail, but I think, I might pass over to Claire. We've been very lucky in that MCAR have given us some additional funding over the last few months to support improved pathway management of cancer patients. So they've given us monies to increase our cancer navigator workforce by a further four navigators, which has been really helpful, and a further two dedicated cancer managers. So those individuals will only be in post for six months to 12 months, but will really help. And obviously, in the meantime, we will work on our cancer workforce plan to establish whether or not those posts are needed more permanently. MCAR have also been kind enough to offer further support in terms of training for our cancer navigators and others, so that they're really clear on the rules around cancer management, so that they can be applied correctly, and the way in which they should engage with patients. You know, and sort of support them in coming to earlier appointments and so on. So hopefully, I've partly answered your question. I'm not sure if I can give maybe a wider view on recruitment in the organisation that might support the answer as well.
Just to come back in, thank you.
Would you like Claire to do that?
That'd be useful. Thank you.
Yes, good morning, everybody. I'm Claire Lowe. I'm the HR Director at ULHT. And I'm also the System People Officer on an interim basis. So just really to add what Amanda's offered to you this morning. We are absolutely working with Amanda to get those roles in ASAP as priority. And we are very grateful for the funding that's been received to support those posts. More specifically, at ULHT, we are ahead of our trajectory in terms of nursing vacancies. And we continue to work very closely with our system partners in terms of how we can utilise our resources across the system to attract and retain staff, both within the acute and primary and community setting. So certainly from the ULHT perspective, we are in a very good position in terms of our vacancy position. It's certainly the best it's been in the last two years in terms of our doctors and nurses. There's still lots to do with regards to some of the nationally challenged, hard to recruit to posts. But we are working really hard to continue to attract and retain staff in the Lincolnshire system. So hopefully, that gives a bit more broader context for colleagues and councillors. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. In which case, I'm now going to move to a proposal that the presenters be thanked for their efforts in the treatment of cancer. That the achievements over the last year be welcomed, which include the overall reduction in treatment backlogs and the implementation of new treatment pathways. And finally, that further plans to improvements to be supported and a further support, report, sorry, be requested in one year's time to include comorbidities work and the support in place for young people. Do I have a second for my proposal, please? Thank you, councillor Kendrick. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. That's supported. Thank you very much for the presentation. In which case, we'll now move on to agenda item six, ULHT Nuclear Medicine. This item was circulated as part of the agenda pack on pages 69 to 72. Last year, the committee responded to the consultation on the reconfiguration of the nuclear medicine service and was not entirely convinced of the rationale for consolidation of the services at Lincoln County Hospital. At nine, I'd like to welcome our presenters from United Lincolnshire Hospitals NHS Trust, Chiro Rinaldi, Deputy Medical Director, Claire Lowe, Director of People and Organisational Development, Laura White, Head of Nuclear Medicine, and Anna Richards, Associate Director of Communications. Could I ask you to present the report in about five minutes, please, and take questions at the end? Thank you.
Hi. Thank you for inviting us back to tell you the progress we've made subsequent to the decision that was made by the trust. The decision was made in October 22. The main emphasis and reason for this was the lack of staffing and the inability to have a robust service at the three sites. It was felt that centralising the service would enable us to grow our own technologies. There's a national shortage of technologists and we've struggled to recruit and retain staff for a number of years now. So the progress we've made subsequent to the decision is we met with the staff at Boston, redeployed three members of staff who did not want to move to Lincoln with equivalent jobs within Boston. We've got two staff members who are now working within Lincoln and Grantham. We stopped scanning in Boston in, at the end of 22. This enabled us to clear the department out because, as you may be aware, they have now knocked the building down for the new A and E that's going to be in Boston. Since then, we've managed to order, well, we've ordered two state of the art gamma cameras that should be arriving in early next year. And we have managed to recruit a new apprentice to the department and they start their degree next Monday. So we have made quite a lot of positive steps forward within the department. We're also in communication with the ULHT charity to ensure that the enabling works and the environment that the department will be a lot nicer. So I think previously, quite a lot of the, well, Grantham and Boston and Lincoln, the departments aren't as nice as we would want them to be. But we've spoken with charity and they're happy to fund hyped music, nice ceiling tiles and some subdued lighting. So we've actually managed to visit some other centres where they have cameras and their environment made it look much nicer for the patients. I'm open to questions now. Is that okay?
That's, yeah, perfect. Thank you. In which case, I've got councillor Smith first.
Thank you, chairman. Why is there such a sharp difference between myocardial scans and other scans? And the difference in time taken to be seen and get results is stark? And what is being done to improve said situation? And as you alluded, chairman, I think it'd be remiss of one of us not to mention I still have those concerns that you've alluded to. And I remain to be convinced, and certainly for residents in your part of the world in Lincolnshire and other colleagues, this seems very much again another issue of let's centralise everything in Lincoln, which is great if you have the finance and the ability to get to Lincoln. If you don't, you have a bit of a problem and your chances and health inequalities go higher and higher. But time will tell, chairman. It's obviously been, the decisions have been made above our heads. Hopefully, we're proven wrong, but I have a horrible feeling we won't be as we're not very often proved wrong when we make statements here, chairman, it seems, of late.
Okay, the difference with the reporting, or the difference with the turnaround with myocardial perfusion, they're actually quite an involved test. So we have to stress the patients and we then have to do the rest with regard to the reporting. The reporting's actually done outside of our control. So it's a different directorate that does the reporting and we are challenging this. And we are trying to get better turnaround, but I think they are short staffed. And there isn't much cover when people are not around with regard to the centralising with regard to nuclear medicine, because it's a specialised test. We've always had to, people have always had to travel across the county for certain tests. I mean, we have started nuclear medicine PET scanning, which we're heavily involved in. People were travelling from Skegness to Nottingham for that service, they're now travelling to Lincoln. Where it isn't a common, a common, nuclear medicine isn't a common test. So the typical numbers we're doing are about 3,000 in a year, whereas radiology will do that in a day. And personally, I feel that centralising means we can actually improve the service for Lincolnshire. Whereas having it spread thinly over three sites meant there was no resources to actually bring new services in. So we have brought new services into Lincoln in the time I've been here. And we are planning to do that. So we're actually planning on starting a new service with cardiology for DPD scanning, where currently people are travelling to London for that scan.
Thank you, Gem. I certainly expect, accept, excuse me, how specialised it is. And I think even we as a committee accepted that over three sites wasn't viable. I think the concerns we raised around having the hub and spoke model, I think, are still there. But I fully appreciate where you're coming from and certainly appreciate that the services, the new services that you have brought in to Lincolnshire, especially the one you previously mentioned, because I'm aware that certain specialties, you do have to travel outside of county for. And as you've already alluded to, one is down in the capital and that is to be welcomed. And I hope our concern isn't warranted, Gem, but only time will tell in future. And we are where we are. But no, I'd certainly like to thank everyone involved who has brought new services into the county because it's only better for our residents, even if they do have to travel.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Allen?
Thank you.
Thank you, chairman. And thank you for the presentation of this report, which doesn't say an awful lot apart from our concerns to a certain extent of being ignored and the trust is ploughing ahead with its improvements. I still would say that our concerns probably are still valid in terms of access to the consolidated service in Lincoln for people that are coming for tests from some distance away. And I did pick up in the reports that, you know, there does seem to be some additional inconvenience for people, you know, within the system who are, you know, ready to have operations. And the day before they have the operations, they have to be bussed up to Lincoln to have the test. So the test results are available back at base, you know, whether that be Pilgrim or elsewhere the following day, which can't be very enjoyable for the actual patient concerns. I suppose that's inevitable again, you know, if you consolidate the service at one location. The, so, but that's where we are, you know, the decision's been made and that's what the consequences will be. Like councillor Smith, you know, we wait and see, you know, what reaction there is to our patients. Although it does seem that, you know, the organisation perhaps has more importances or different importances to the ones that are associated perhaps with the actual patients using the system. The only other thing I would say is it does seem to be taking a long time. We, the decision was made in October 22 and that's getting on for a year away. And the service won't be up and running until sometime next year or late next year. Although the evidence does suggest that there must be spare capacity within the system because, you know, it doesn't seem as though the overall number of procedures is suffering at the moment. And maybe we should give some benefit to the NHS trust for preparing, you know, perhaps spare capacity for the future. As all the various issues that we've been talking about over many, many committee meetings come into fruition in terms of the aging population and greater demand on the health service. It's not a question, I'm afraid, really.
I don't know if you want to pick into that in any way or you want to leave it at the moment. No, that's fine.
Oh, sorry. Could I just say, I mean, I think part of the problem was that what we were planning to do is have, we wanted to be reactive and not, or we want, sorry, we want to be proactive and not reactive. So the fact is that due to poor staffing, we literally had two trained staff at Boston. That meant if one of them phoned in sick on a Monday, we would be cancelling patient surgery. So rather than cancelling patient surgery, we tried to make a robust, we're trying to make a robust service at Lincoln so that we know where we, you know, patients aren't having surgeries cancelled at very short notice. They're not tests, these, these aren't testing results. These are actually an injection that they detect in the theatre. And the number, the radiation is detected in theatre and the number that are actually done in Boston is quite low compared to Lincoln. So do I think it's best for the patients? No. Do I think we should have had two sites if we had the staffing? But this is, these are the decisions, these difficult decisions that we have to make. We are trying to, we're developing our own staff with the pretext that they will hopefully then stay in region. We have quite a long history of training technologists and clinical scientists, but most of them have roots elsewhere in the country. So we train them and then they leave. So we're trying a different technique where we're actually bringing in imaging assistants on a band two, oh, sorry, a band three. And then the latest apprentice is actually a very competent band three clinical imaging assistant who is now going to be getting a degree and will become a fully trained clinical scientist whose whole family is in Lincolnshire. So the chances of her then suddenly deciding to go back to Devon is quite slim. And that, that's the situation wherein this is nationally the problem. I know that in Nottingham, there are six apprentices. And so actually training apprentices, they can do certain things within our service, but they can't actually do everything. So it's a difficult decision that we've had to make to try and then regrow our department. Rather than have a very fragile service over three sites.
Joan, I wasn't asking for a great deal of justification in terms of the decision, the decisions we made.
Okay, thank you. In which case, I've now got councillor Passol, please.
Thank you, chairman. As somebody who spends a great deal of time bouncing between Lincoln and other tertiary services, I'm curious as to whether there has been or has been noticed an improvement in streamlining the referral through two tertiary services and particularly issues created issues created by the fact that uh the IT systems used within Lincolnshire are not compatible with certainly the certainly the IT services in Nottingham um and probably elsewhere. Has there been any improvement made to how communication stems uh from Lincoln to the other areas? And if not, are there any plans uh to make improvements? Thank you.
Um I'm not sure if that is a question, is a question I can answer. Is it in relation to nuclear medicine? Or it seems a more general question?
Um well, uh as far as I'm aware, the uh IT system is fairly general and creates problems um across departments. Certainly, I'm seen by um various specialties and they all encounter it. If you're saying that's uh not an issue in nuclear medicine, then fine.
You're you're talking about referrals. Well, our referrals come from um Web V, which is the same as radiology. So street, the the cha, it wouldn't change. So they come generally from Web V to us. So the centralising of the service, I mean, Chair, Chair might be able to answer better.
Um um excuse me, um I think I think from from the IT perspective, clearly there is more work to do. But in terms of diagnostic, um so there is, there is a positive co- collaboration between different providers, you know, we have a consortium um Enrad that unopened up and, you know, different system in one single uh pack system, meaning that if you have a scanning whatever hospitals in the, in 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 most of the region, you know, you're you're able to see, um you know, the images but also see the reports and that helps. So, you know, the the communication stream is much, much easier. Um you know, as long as people know how to use the software, um but it it does work. And referring to a tertiary centre as a separate way completely, and some of those referrals are coming through MDTs, as there are tertiary referral bases, um they might be uh populated during an MDT discussion, particularly where uh there are either complex diagnostic or procedures that need to be uh done in tertiary centre. Uh and then there is a portal that I'm I'm I believe both Leicester and Nottingham are bought into, which is referpatient.org. And that is a uh online platform. Um so it's getting better. Um but I guess what what you are alluding to is, you know, a uh much sort of uh wider approach to IT where we are able to see all the information, you know, on a sort of real life basis. And that is still not happening. But I think from from diagnostic, including nuclear medicine, it's easier to access from all sites bas- based on this. Hope, hope that helps.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I've now got councillor Mackinson-Sunders.
Thank you. I just wanted to give my support to the team because I do think people understand that they have to go to one centre like Lincoln or somewhere like that. And and I think when people understand that X-rays are different from nuclear medicine, when it's explained to them, they are quite happy to go to one place. And if we can provide a better service for the people of Lincolnshire, I I think the patient is grateful for that. And so whilst I have sympathy with your arguments over there, I I do think putting it in one place does make sense. And it's easier for most people to get to somewhere like Lincoln than it is to go to various other places around the county. So I wanted to support the um the team. Um I just think, I'd think they do a very good job and it's very um um one of my friends at cancer was getting pet scans um de rigueur in when she lived, when she lived in in London. Round here, you have to go miles to have things like that. And the better services we can provide for people, I think we should fully support that. So well done, team, and more power to your elbow.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh I've just got two questions for me. So on page seventy one, the report refers to more administrations in March twenty twenty three compared to March twenty twenty two. Is this because of increased demand? And if so, how is the service planning to manage with future demand?
No, it's more about the fact that what what we're, the process we were in before, where we were having to make the kits. We make the kits in Lincoln and then they travel to Lincoln, they travel to Grantham and Boston, therefore you're automatically losing scanning time. Because in Lincoln, the scanning time is between nine and four. In Boston, the scanning time isn't till half ten, eleven. But the staff have to be in before because there's certain jobs they have to do. So actually you're losing patients by the fact that you have to transport these um radioactive kits to the other sites. So we, I mean, statistically, there's some fluctuation, but um generally the types of tests are changing, but the demand is quite static with nuclear medicine because a number of things have now gone into pet rather than conventional nuclear medicine.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And given more centralisation continues to happen at Lincoln Hospital, are there any instances where patients have been late for their appointments because of parking difficulties?
Um off the top of my head, I I'm not aware of any, but we were, we have, we've always had problems with people not being able to park when they were coming from Lincoln rather than Boston. I think people tend to, if they're coming from the coast, tend to leave longer because they know that the transport, you know, traffic and the chances of dumping into a farm vehicle is much higher if you're travelling from the coast to Lincoln. So I would say that people that are travelling further away actually have less of a problem than those that are just down the road.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other speakers, so I'm going to move to the proposal that United Lincolnshire Hospitals NHS Trust be thanked for their report and presentation on the nuclear medicine service. And that a further update be submitted after six months of the service being fully centralised at Lincoln County Hospital. Do I have a second to my proposal, please, councillor Smith? All those in favour, please show. Thank you. That's supported. And thank you for your presentation.
Sorry, could I just say that's likely to be then October, so we're hoping, oh, no, we're gone. Oh.
No, carry on, it's fine.
Yeah, sorry, it's likely to be October, so we're planning on, so there's some enabling work that needs to happen to put the cameras in. Um and so we have ordered them and we're expecting them in early next year. So our plan to centralise and close Grantham is about April of next year. So should we sort of plan a similar time next year? Is that okay with you?
That'll be absolutely fine. Thank you for that.
Right, excellent. Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, in which case I'll now move to, and you, now move on to agenda item seven. Children and young people's mental health services. This item was circulated as part of the agenda pack on pages seventy three to eighty six. Last year, the committee's working group considered mental health services. And one of the outcomes of the working group was a recommendation to consider the services provided by Lincolnshire Partnerships NHS Foundation Trust, including developments. In July, the committee considered adult mental health services. And this time we have two separate items on children's and older adult services. I'd now like to welcome our presenters remotely. We've got Chris Higgins, Director of Operations, and Eve Baird, Oper- uh Associate Director of Operations for Specialist Services. Could I ask you to present the report in about five to ten minutes and take questions at the end, please? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Macy, and thank you uh to the committee for allowing us to um come and talk to you today. Um as councillor Macy said there, we, I think you've heard quite a lot about the changes that we've been working on across a broad range of mental health uh and dementia services in uh in the trust. And there's a lot of work going off, both in the trust and in the broader community. So really pleased to have the opportunity to come and talk to you about that today. Um Eve's going to take us through um just some headlines of the paper that you've got before us and then I'm pleased to take any questions that you might have. So I'll hand over to Eve.
Thanks, Chris. Morning. Um so I am going to keep this brief as I'm assuming there'll be lots of questions. The paper describes a range of um children and young people's mental health and emotional wellbeing services provided by LPFT and also provides some narrative in relation to access to those services, demand for those services and some of the developments in those services over the last two to three years. Just for a bit of context, children and young people's mental health services are commissioned differently to adult services in Lincolnshire. In the Lincolnshire County Council is the delegated lead commissioner for all community-based services on behalf of the ICB. Children and young people's inpatient mental health services are commissioned directly by NHS England. Um, excuse me, and that's through the East Midlands CAMHS Provider Collaborative. As a result of this difference in the commissioning arrangements, LPFT worked really closely with our colleagues in the council to develop and deliver services that meet the needs of children and young people and their families in Lincolnshire. And I'm really plow- proud of the collaborative and partnership approach that we've got, which means we're working across health and social care with a shared ambition across our organisations. Um within the paper, we've highlighted some of the current areas of focus work, including the enhancement of our existing services available to children and young people requiring crisis or urgent responses. And also the investment in community CAMHS services to increase capacity within the teams so that treatment and support can be offered in a timely way. The transformation programme described within the paper is an ambitious locally-led initiative to complete a Lincolnshire-wide stocktake of all our existing services and develop a plan for future services that's co-produced at every stage with children and young people and their families. The timeframe for this work is described within the paper, but I did want to emphasise that those timeframes are not now and nor will they slowing down the development of services where we know we've got an identified gap or where there's areas for improvement. As I said at the start, I've deliberately kept my summary brief as I'm anticipating questions and wanted to allow as much time as possible. But if there are any specific sections of the paper you'd like me to cover in more detail, then please let me know.
Okay, thank you. I've got councillor Allen first, please.
Uh, thank you, chairman. I I think the other thing that we mentioned when we discussed this uh some committees ago was the importance that the we attach to uh young persons, uh children, young persons' mental health. Um the 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 question I've got is that it's very, it's 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 very good to see um proposals coming forward which try and address the issues. And it's becoming more important that we do see these because I have a feeling, um as is indicated in the report, that um children's mental health is one of the things that's um has had a noticeable negative effect as a result of Covid. And indeed, the situation seems to be ongoing. So it's good to see measures being put forward to actually do it. Um the other thing that we we did, I think, notice um of uh as an area of concern and when we considered it previously was the amount of time it was taking to actually get from some sort of initial assessment to the start of some actual genuine treatment, which which was concerning. Um particularly, you know, if a a young person has a severe episode, it seems as though um 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 that needed to be improved. And I did see that that is one of the points that's been um put forward within the transformation programme. Um the question I've got is um how much extra money or how how much extra resources going in this to actually provide these genuine improvements over the service that exists at the moment? And and I suppose that's more to, that's particularly to do with resources um that will help deal with these um excessive wait times and things like that. Because that seems to be what key, what's key to dealing with the issues that we have at the moment and perhaps preparing ourselves for the future.
Absolutely agree. And um we've been working really hard between ourselves, the local authority and um the ICB. We made a joint commitment two years ago to invest quite significantly. So we had one point two million pounds worth of investment into our community CAMHS services, which has increased our staffing and our workforce across um our core CAMHS services, but also our community eating disorder services. And we've seen a significant reduction in the length of time children and young people are waiting. It is still longer than we want it to be. Um and we're working really hard on that. The teams are working really hard with recruitment into.
Looks like she's frozen up.
Yeah, I think Eve has frozen. I'm happy to to step in. So just picking on that um point there is that we have had significant investment, as Eve said, of one point two million pounds um over the last year and into this year. And that is enabling us to increase the capacity of our um our services for children, young people. We've got a a trajectory to try to that we're following um to reduce the amount of time people are waiting from assessment and to treatment. It's still not where we want it to be, but we have got the right capacity in place to do that. So we've got the right investment we need, which is great to see. Recruitment in all services is a bit of a challenge, um as you can imagine, but um and particularly in some of our east coast areas, we know that uh recruitment sometimes is a bit more difficult just because the catchment areas uh got the C on one side of it. Um but that said, we've we've had some real successes in terms of people wanting to work in our children's services. And that's enabling us to be able to um increase our workforce so that we can bring those weights down. So it's heading in the right direction. Um and but still more work to do on that. I think the points around the Covid impact are really pertinent. I think that we've we have seen nationally and locally is an increase in the number of people presenting for support around the mental health, particularly in that children in children, young people uh age groups. Um I say we're not alone in that. That's something that's happening nationally. But as part of that, there's about, there's a there's an approach that we're doing through our work, which is focusing on uh making sure we've got those really specialist services in place for when people need it, but also looking at the broad range of support. So we're called mental health support teams in schools. We're still developing and rolling out across the county. Um emotional support in other settings and just trying to provide a range of different support services so that whatever the the level of need, there's something there for for children, young people. Um and I know it's mentioned in the report, but certainly the transformation work that we're trying to do is similar to what we've um spoken to the committee about before in terms of the the adult transformation. We're looking at how we can broaden the range of um support services, community groups, voluntary, voluntary organizations that can support families beyond the the bounds of what LPFT traditionally did it.
Okay, thank you. I've got councillor Kendrick next, please.
Chairman, could I just uh come back on one point that was made in the response? If that's all right.
Uh you may, yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you, chairman, for being very lenient with me. Um I I very, I I was very happy with the response that's been made because it does suggest that um we're maybe going in the right direction uh with additional resources. Um the the I I was very keen to see all the preventative measures, sort of things, you know, trying to pick things up as early as possible before situations get too difficult. Uh and the only point I would make is that, you know, it's good to see prevention appearing in the national health um service provision. Um um it, but it may well increase demand. Um so I'm quite sure that everybody is aware of that.
Microphone, please, councillor Allen. Thank you. Uh so councillor Kendrick.
Uh thank you, chairman. Uh I may have missed it uh reading through the paper, but um obviously there there uh there's phone access for young people, but um knowing young people these days, they tend not to ring people up. They tend to do everything online from their mobiles. Uh I was just wondering, and I say I apologize if I've missed it in in the paper. I was just wondering what sort of publicity is given for online access for young people to to um get in touch with the services. Uh and secondly, I was just wondering what extent there is uh in terms of eating disorders. I I understood perhaps there's been an increase in eating disorders amongst young people. Uh and thirdly, um i- is there much of an impact on dual diagnosis for for young people who are experiencing mental health problems? And unfortunately also um have um substance misuse issues. Sorry to throw so many questions out, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yes, so in terms of the eating disorders, absolutely, particularly over Covid, we saw over a two hundred percent increase in the number of children accessing services for either a diagnosed eating disorder or challenges around their eating um related to their mental health. Within the new investment we have, we've increased staffing within our eating disorder team. And um we're able to provide a really robust service to those children and young people now. That staffing has also included a designated consultant psychiatrist, where previously our consultant psychiatrists worked across the community teams and supported children and young people with eating disorders. Um as depending on the community team that they would, was their most local. We now have a designated consultant psychiatrist working with our um community eating disorder team, and that's making a significant difference in getting children and young people timely access to um a medical review as well as the psychological support they need. in getting children and young people timely access to a medical review as well as the psychological support they need. Those numbers have started to reduce post-Covid, but they're not back down to where they were pre-Covid. So we have seen a sustained increased demand, though it is lower than at its peak. In terms of dual diagnosis, we haven't seen a significant increase in dual diagnosis presentations. We continue to support children with mental health needs regardless of whether they've also got additional needs around substance abuse. And I think there was a third question, but I didn't write it down, apologies.
It was about access to services. Young people tend to do things online or through apps on their phone. I was just, I may have missed it in the report, but I was just wondering if there was at least more publicity for access via apps on mobiles.
Yes, I think, I don't think you missed it in the report, I think I missed putting it in, so apologies for that. But we do have digital options for children and young people, both in terms of self-referring. Digitally, we have online access, and we also have working partnership with COOTH who provide online digital counselling as well. And we're currently just setting up a pilot providing additional online support for children and young people and their families in crisis as part of some specific funding we got from NHS England. So it's one of the ambitions of the Transformation to make sure that we are using all mediums to support children and young people because we know that lots of children and young people prefer digital modes. However, we also know from when we had to go to predominantly digital during Covid that a number of children and young people benefit from seeing people face to face and actually have better outcomes in a shorter timeframe when that treatment is delivered face to face. So we want to continue to offer both modalities.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, I think we should never lose the option for face to face. I think that's very, very important. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. I've got councillor Smith next.
Thank you, chairman. It's clear, as has been already alluded to, that substantial investment has taken place in the last three years. And this is most welcome, as previously waits were far too long and the referral process far too complex. And I know the paper goes into some detail about how they're trying to simplify that process and also not make it a silo process where once you immediately hit a specific age, you immediately move services, even if it's actually at that time not the most appropriate service. So that is most welcome. And the review on those issues, which I know is being undertaken at the moment, is quite timely. Have any of the presenters had sight of or are they conducting any research as to why the prevalence of mental health diagnoses and the complexities in these cases in children are increasing? And this has been an issue long before Covid, chairman, and this has been a problem for a number of years. Covid has ripped the plaster off, if you like, and made it a very prominent and obvious problem, but this is not a new problem. This is a problem that's been going on for a number of years. And when I last raised this, very research into this has been done, which I think is a bit cart before horse, because unless you know what's causing it, chairman, you can treat the symptoms, but you can't treat the cause. So you're constantly firefighting in action when actually if you knew what the cause was, you could do something about it and stem that flow of patients that seems to forever increase. And I appreciate that no service has a bottomless pit of money and there's always fighting for funding. So if we knew what the cause was, chairman, between agencies, we might be able to do something more.
Thank you for that. I absolutely agree, and it's why I think prevention is so key. We need to understand the root cause for children and young people's mental ill health and emotional distress. And as a health and care system, the earlier we can intervene and support children and young people, the less likely those difficulties are to manifest and become lifelong conditions that children and young people who then transition to adulthood are having to manage. We are involved in national research where it's available, as you say. There's lots of pockets of research, often looking at very specific etiologies. So you'll often see a pocket of research on eating disorders, for example. And then the opposite end of the spectrum where it will look at the the population health in the widest sense and what are those predeterminants of mental ill health or emotional distress and trauma? We are working really closely with colleagues across the council around the family hubs as well, and looking at how we can support and strengthen the offer around both children and young people's and parental's mental health, parental mental health, to make sure that we get interventions in at the earliest stage. Chris, did you want to come in as well?
Yeah, we're just to say, I think there's things we're doing locally there in terms of our Transformation Programme and other pieces of work just to make sure we can understand the right places to target. And much of that, as Eve said, is it will come from the people who use services, the families and others. Alongside that is we are looking at both local and national research opportunities. And we have a small research team in the organisation, but we heard last week that the National Institute of Health Research is is looking to be able to put some additional funding out for local areas to be able to do targeted research in their particular geographies. And so certainly as an organisation and working with system colleagues, we'll be looking to put bids into how to access that funding because we know that there's rurality and other elements that affect us differently to the other parts of the country. And again, some of these real social determinants of ill health, what does that mean for us? What does that mean for our mental health as people use our services? So there's a bit about working with people and the communities in which we're working with, but there's also some other more robust research approaches that we're looking to adopt. But certainly more to do in that space to really to pinpoint the the activities and actions that are going to have the best impact for everybody.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Paisol.
Thank you, chairman. Just a couple of questions. One, this might be a misunderstanding on my part, I'm not sure. Given the current state of labour relations within the NHS, how are, what is the current impact on services within the mental health sphere? Are they struggling to the same degree as the rest of the NHS? Or given the nature of the structure, are mental health services reasonably protected? And if there isn't currently a problem, is there anything at risk further down the track in terms of the workload being ever increasing, given this post-Covid status? The only other thing I'd be interested to know is there was a lot of talk about making things as accessible to children through their preferred methods of communication. I'm just interested how much investment is being targeted to make sure that the services and access ports are as accessible to those who don't fully possess, be they dyslexics, be they have sensory deprivations and other disabilities. Is that being taken into account? And are you seeing an increase in those sort of dual patients, given the other pressures on the NHS caused by waiting times, et cetera? Thank you.
Thank you for those questions. I'll pick up the first question about workforce and then I'll pass to Eve to pick up your second question, if that's okay. And I mean, the trust mental health services are no stranger to and not immune from the workforce pressures that we see happening around the country. However, what I would say is that we're doing a lot of work in that space. It's been a real focus for our board and for the wider organisation to make sure that we're doing everything we can to fill our vacancies. And there's different reasons that have created some of the workforce challenges that we've got. Some about the, just the investment that we've had in the mental health services. I've worked as a nurse in mental health services for about 25 years. And over the last few years, we've seen, you know, some tremendous investment into mental health services that we've never seen before, certainly not in my career to date. And so that's absolutely brilliant, but investing lots of services all at once all over a short period of time obviously creates new roles to fill. And we're still in that process of just catching up. And as we just talked about there, you know, 1.2 million pound investment for new staff into services, we need time to be able to recruit and fill those posts. So there is some gaps and there's more that we want to do. That said, we're starting to see some real inroads into that where we've sent across children's services and others. We're seeing those vacancies being filled and people wanting to come and work in the organisation. And we also, there's a few strands that we're doing around that. So from a recruitment perspective, we're doing targeted recruitment. So you might have seen our pictures on the back of buses, on posters around towns because we've been really pushing to promote the opportunities that are available in the trust. And that's starting to bear some fruit. Similarly, we've been working with colleagues on an international basis in other countries to do skills and knowledge transfer. And we've seen as a result of that, some people wanted to come over and work work with us in the organisation, which is brilliant from a workforce perspective, but also brilliant from a knowledge skills transfer perspective because of bringing new ideas into the services locally. There's also a piece around retention. So it's about making sure that when people do work for us, that they want to stay working for us. So we put a lot of emphasis into our kind of team development work, our values as an organisation to try to make it the best place for people to come and stay and hope people do want to stay with us longer term. So what we're starting to see is we had a period where we was really challenged. That's starting to get better. I'd say certainly in our, most of our children's services, children's mental health services, we're seeing significant improvements in terms of workforce gaps. And just as kind of, I suppose it's related, you'll be aware of the recent strikes that have been happening for junior doctors and for consultants. Here in the trust, we've had minimal impact of that. Most of the staff working in the trust in those groups and others have wanted to stay at work and continue to provide a service. And I'm hoping that that's in part by, you know, a reflection of the fact that people feel valued, want to work for the trust and want to continue to provide a good job. So, so yes, so I won't, you know, there are challenges and there's still more work to do in that space. But certainly the things that we're doing seem to be bearing fruit, seem to be having a positive impact and certainly for our children's mental health services. So hopefully that answers the first question. I'll hand over to Eve for your second one.
Thank you, and really pleased to have the second question. Access to our services for children and young people with any additional needs, so whether that's a learning disability, whether they're neurodiverse, whether it's a sensory difficulty, is one of our key focuses for the Transformation Programme. So we have a specific work stream focused on our mental health services for children with a learning disability or autism. But equally, access for anyone with additional need is a key focus across all of the work streams of the Transformation as well. And we very much are taking that no wrong door approach. So we want to make sure that we can deliver interventions and treatment and the support offer that is accessible regardless of someone else, someone's additional needs. And we're very cognisant that children and young people, for example, with social communication needs are far more likely to experience mental health difficulties than children and young people without those needs. So we're working really hard on that, an example of which is today, we've got the head of service for children and young people's is actually at this very moment attending the Special Educational Needs Committee meeting for Lincolnshire to make sure that our mental health services are absolutely embedded in the SEND agenda and that we're embedding the SEND agenda in our services.
Thank you. If I could just come back with one slight supplemental. In reference to the online pathways, I read through the various options that were outlined in the papers, but there was nothing specific listed about apps for, as a pathway to get in. Do you have app capabilities? Or is this something that's currently being worked on to come in in due course?
They were working with a specific company who provide a national app around supporting children and young people's mental health at the moment. And that was from investment this year from the ICB. And that app is in development, but will be accessible across Lincolnshire and won't just be accessible for children who are known to LPFT services. It will be an app that actually we can make all our partners across GP practices, primary care, schools, health, education aware of. And that will be an app-based emotional wellbeing and mental health support service. We also have on our children and young people's webpage for LPFT a link to lots of different self-help online resources, some of which have been uniquely created by staff within LPFT and some of which are nationally available and we're signposting. So it's an area where we do have some functionality at the moment, but I would anticipate the next three years will be, that will be one of our biggest areas of development.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I've got councillor Welbury next, please.
Hello, everybody. Thank you. I've got a few questions here for you. It's manned, it says in the report 24/7. I'd like to know the staffing levels and also when staff are available. As we all know, the darkest hour is before dawn and many people need help through the night. I would think once a young person gets on the phone, they need to talk for quite a long time. So I'm just wondering about the wait times as well, if you're in need at midnight or in the early hours of the morning. Who is actually staffing the lines as opposed to during the day when probably the need isn't quite so much? The second thing I have is the support for families. It says that key workers are assigned to families. I'd like to know the ratio of key worker to families and the level of support, the hours per week maybe, that is put into the families and if there is a waiting time. And the third one I'm interested in is the bed usage and availability. I'd like to know how many private beds are used, such as the priory resources from the priory as opposed to NHS beds. What is the waiting time and how quickly can a young person be referred? And how far from county is it? And also what resource is given to the family to actually visit that young person if they are way out of county, out of East Midlands? And if indeed they are out of East Midlands. I know it's quite a lot of questions and you know, hopefully you'll be able to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. So Here For You helpline is staffed 24/7. It is staffed by a combination of registered health practitioners and support workers and administration staff. The feedback we've had from the Here For You helpline since we introduced the dedicated access team, which was in the spring of last year, has been consistently positive, both in terms of speed of access and the level of support that people get. Prior to that, it was staffed by a combination of staff working from other services on a rotor. And we did struggle at times to offer a timely support for people and a timely response. So that introduction of the designated access team has made a huge difference. Outside of sort of core hours from about nine o'clock in the evening, actually, the number of calls that we get to the helpline is significantly reduced. The staffing levels are different in an evening and it's staffed through what we call our tier two offer. We haven't had any issues that I'm aware of of children and young people not having answered calls or not having the time they need for those calls. But that is something I can go specifically look at and provide an update to the committee at a later date. In terms of support for families, there's different support available to families depending on the type of support that a child or young person needs and the family. So the key working team that's referenced in the paper is a specific national initiative that's available currently for children and young people who have a diagnosis of autism and are at risk of admission to a mental health. and are at risk of admission to a mental health inpatient unit or need high levels of support in the community. So, so the key working team is, is available to a very specific cohort of children and young people. And, and that contact can be up to daily as, as required. The, every child or young person, person accessing any of our services will have a named professional or a key worker identified for them. And the caseloads of those vary according to the level of the service. So if, if it's a service, for example, one of our services into schools, it may be that a practitioner will have multiple families on their caseload. If it's one of our services where the level of support and need is higher, we would expect the, the caseloads to be a lot less. And within our core CAMHS community teams, we've introduced designated family liaison workers. So each child or young person will still have a named professional that is their link person and the person that, that they, that they go to, who will know the details of their care. But additionally, within the team, there is a dedicated role now for someone to be an additional support into the child or young person and their families. So they will make a minimum of monthly contact. They're available at any time if the families want to make contact. But we've set a standard of a minimum of checking in every month. How are things going? Has anything changed? Is there anything else you need? So in terms of that level of support for families, that really does vary depending, depending on the level of need, I guess, for the child or young person. And it's something we're really keen to, to hear about, whether we're getting that right or not as part of the transformation. So we're reaching out a lot to families to say, does this feel the right level and what would make it better? In terms of bed usage and availability, the majority of children and young people we have who require access to a mental health inpatient bed will be placed within the East Midlands and the Provider Collaborative has beds in Northampton, Leicester, Nottinghamshire and Derby. And so the majority of our younger, of our children and young people will be placed in, in a bed within that provider collaborative. On the, on the rare occasion that there isn't a bed available, whether that's because of, we can't meet the specialist needs of that child or young person. So for example, when we have, on the very rare occasion, we have children under the age of 13 who need admission, there are only a few specific mental health inpatient units across the country that, that offer those services to children under that age of 13. We would then be placing outside. Those, those placements face the same level of scrutiny, both from us, from the Provider Collaborative and from NHS England as, as our own NHS led placements. And in terms of support for families, we've recently been working with one of our service user groups on making sure that we can offer both financial support as well as emotional support for families of children and young people who are placed in a mental health unit to make sure that they can have regular contact with, with their family member and can visit in person as well. Is there anything else you wanted to add, Chris?
Yeah, now just, just on that second, the final point there in terms of the, the supporting families with costs, that's across all age ranges now. It's something we brought in this year. I think it was actually on the back of conversations we had with the committee in previous updates around previous temporary closure of the, the PQ and how we support people. And we've expanded that out so that if families are struggling financially, cost to be able to visit relatives who are placed in a, into an inpatient setting, then we will help them with that. So that protocol, as you said, was developed with service users and the families to be able to make sure it's, it's appropriate and meets needs. So really pleased with that piece of work. It's, it, but it's just been developed this last year. The only thing I would add to that is that, in terms of that whole piece, is that as per, I suppose, the transformation and I suppose that it's, it's in, including the title is such, is we want to develop and evolve our services. We, you know, we've talked a lot about some brilliant things that we're trying to do and trying all the good things we're, we're doing. We know things aren't as good as they should be everywhere for everyone. And that, that's driving us to make, improve us, make things better. And as part of that is that if we get feedback that things aren't working in the way that they ought to be, or we're not quite getting it right, then we'll adapt and we'll change our services. So some recent examples of that is that our mental health urgent treatment centre, urgent assessment centre in Lincoln, that I think we spoke to the committee about previously that only opened recently for adults. We're just in a process of expanding that out so it can support children as well as adults. And similarly, we have mental health liaison services, which are teams of practitioners that work into the main hospitals in the county to support people with mental health needs in those settings. And again, we're just in the process of expanding that service out. So it offers a whole, the whole age range. So as we're seeing need developing, we're trying to adapt our services to be able to meet that need and we'll continue to do so.
Sorry. Would it be possible, please Eve, to have those figures on the, the telephone system here for you? As you've promised.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Also, has recruitment impacted the key workers? That we, that you say are affiliated to the families? Is there a shortage at the moment? And finally, how are you reaching out to families? What method are you using? Are you using online app or questionnaire? I'm just interested to know how you actually get the families to engage with you and feedback to you how, how they feel that the system's working for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I'll make sure I've taken it as an action to provide the data on the here for you line. In terms of the recruitment to our family liaison post, they're all fully recruited and were really popular posts. Actually, people were very keen to be involved and, and supporting families. In terms of recruitment to the autism specific key worker service, we were fully recruited at the start. As you often get with new services, we've seen some movement and we're back out to recruitment for some posts. But the team is managing the level of referrals that it's got at the moment. So that's really positive. In terms of engaging with families, we're trying to be as creative as possible is what I would say. So we've done targeted engagement with different family groups. That has included online engagements, sending out surveys, inviting people to come and talk to us, asking people for feedback, immediately following a session with one of our practitioners. Healthwatch have currently got a survey that's live at the moment that's for families and children and young people that have accessed our services with a particular focus on transition. And we're going to be really keen to see the outcome of, of that survey as well. We've been doing, we've held open days and, and done some drop in sessions. So we have been as creative as, as we, we're able to. But if anybody's got any suggestions about other ways that we could involve families, I would really welcome those as well.
Thank you. That's great. Just, can I just clarify one point and then I'll shut up? The key worker is just for autism services only or is it across the board for all children's mental health services? I can't quite understand that. I've been reading through and I, I still can't understand it. Sorry.
No, no apologies. It is, it's quite complex. So there's a specific piece of NHS England funded work that has gone on to ensure that all, across the country, that all services that are developed is a, there's a specific key working service for children and young people who are autistic, who, who might be at risk of their mental health deteriorating. So that's a specific targeted NHSE led piece of work. And, and that's what we call the CYP key working service. However, for all of our services across children and young peoples, we will have a named professional for each individual children, child or young person and their families to contact, which also often families will talk about being their key worker. So it's, it may sound confusing, but it's because people use the term in two different ways. And since NHSE led this specific, specific initiative called the CYP key working initiative, it's, it's become even harder to make sure that we're talking about the right thing.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. Would it be possible to have some figures on the key workers? Not the autism part that's regulated by the government, but the other part for, for families with other issues? A ratio of key worker to families? Do you have that info?
I can get that, yes. And as I said, that, that will vary depending on the service type.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Parkin, please.
My first question was answered. I was going to ask about SEND. Because it's a huge issue for kids in school, because they end up waiting between two systems really, or parallel waits in the same system. And so it's, it's, it's great to see that there's some synergy there coming. It's much, much needed. So that, that's really positive. My concern actually is another school issue. And it's that some academies have their own onsite counsellors. And without denigrating any professionals at all, I, I am concerned and I have been concerned about the quality and the expertise of that counselling when it's been issued. Are we sharing best practice with our schools and academies? Do they, when they have the capacity and the financial capacity to have their own counsellors? And I'm not suggesting that that's necessarily a bad thing, but are we sharing with them what good looks like?
I think that's a really, really good and insightful question. And it's, it's, it's something we're working really hard on because there are, there's, because there's so many different pots of funding within education. The schools and academies do have some choice over how they choose to spend some, some pots of money. That may mean some schools have chosen to employ specific counselling services and other schools haven't. What we make.
Chris, do you want to jump in? I think modern technology is not helping us.
Yeah, we may have lost Steve there. She may be, maybe circle back later. But I'm just thinking in terms of that, we've got our mental health support teams is initiative that's been funded in stages. So that is a group of professionals that providing that counselling and onsite support into schools to, to provide support in those environments and links to our other services that are based in the wider community. And the funding for that's been developed in, in kind of waves. And so we, the intention is to get full coverage across the entire of, of the county. That's got two functions. One is to see children and so offer direct support. But the second function, linking to the question from councillor Parkin is about the, the, the second question is about educating and training and developing education staff so that they can better understand how to be able to support children in, in their care. And I, and as part of that obviously is to be able to describe what good looks like in terms of good mental health and wellbeing support. The challenge we've got at the minute is as the funding is not for the whole county yet, that's been, still being rolled out. We've still got schools that we're not yet covering, but in time we intend to cover, cover everywhere.
Councillor Smith, a very short one, please.
It is a very short one, chairman. Thank you for indulgence. The point Emma made about a member of the team being at the meeting around SEND and the, the health implications. If we can have something back on that either here or at children's, and I know the chairman's behind me, I think that'd be very helpful and would give us the full pitch. So it's just to ask if we could have that back in the appropriate committee chairman. Thank you.
I'm sure councillor Kendrick's picked up on that. I think it would fall more under him. So thank you. I've got no further speakers, so I've just got a couple of questions myself if I may. And that is on page 77, the first paragraph, it states if the business case for an additional mental health urgent assessment centre initially in Boston is supported, can you provide what the approximate timescales would be for this?
I can. So that's the, the mental health urgent assessment centre. I just, I spoke about a few minutes ago. Is that we've got one in Lincoln. That's proved to be really successful. We was a kind of a first, first go at that for Lincolnshire. We developed it. We've evaluated it formally both ourselves and using the East Midlands Academic Health Science Network to make sure that what we're doing is, is delivering what we need to do. And that's been really positive. Because of that, we're saying we want to do more of that. The people are using the service and it's brilliant. So at the first stages, we were just expanding that out currently to be able to support children, young people as well as adults. So it can do the whole age spectrum. And we write in the business case for Boston as, as referenced in the paper. That will have to go through the process. The likelihood is we're talking, because we have to build it and create the space, we haven't got a building we could, could do and staffing it in the context of the workforce challenge we just spoke about. Estimated time will probably be, they'll hold me to it, 2025-ish. It's going to take us a while to get something up and that's if we get it approved. So the first stage is writing the case, we'll put that through the relevant approval bodies in the system in, in the coming months. Hopefully, if, if things go according to plan, I'd like to get a decision, a committed decision to proceed sometime in the next six months. And if we can do that, then, then it's going to take a while. You're probably talking 18 months after that minimum to get the building built and get the staff in it. So it is, it is in the making. We are looking at options that we might be able to do as an interim, as a bit of kind of alternative solutions to provide an extra level of support. But to get that all singing, all dancing mental health assessment centre, it's going to probably be a couple of years in the making.
Okay, thank you for that. And then on pages 75 to 76, there is a reference to secondary waiting times between assessment and treatment for CAMHS. Do you have any more information on the length of secondary waiting times and how many children and young people are impacted, please?
Yes, I do. Thank you. And apologies for my internet. So at, at its, at its height, we had over 300 children and young people waiting for treatment. And of that, the majority of them were waiting over 12 weeks for treatment. At times when we would, as we were just coming out of COVID, that could be for over a year. We've done a lot of work on that and we, we've reduced the number of children and young people waiting to a, we've now got about 160 children and young people who are waiting more than 12 weeks for that secondary wait. So that is still not acceptable and not where we want to be. We have got a improvement trajectory that we worked on that took into account when our new staffing would come online, when we could get back to, excuse me, face to face treatment. And we are online to reduce that to no child or young person waiting more than 12 weeks by March next year. So those, those waits are still not where we want them to be, but they have improved significantly.
Okay, thank you. And my final question is looking at page 76, the crisis and urgent care for children and young people. One of the things that gets raised with me on a regular basis that if a child in crisis ends up, especially from the east coast in Boston, they do find that there is no overnight sort of care there. And it does say that you aim to get a telephone conversation within four hours of their arrival and an actual face to face within 24 hours. So I'm delighted to read that you are looking at recruiting so that you've got someone there 24/7. Can you advise how that's progressing, please?
Yes. So that services, I'm really excited to say substantively funded. So it's recurrent money. So we're currently in the process of, we've recruited to, the, the money became available for Lincoln first and we've recruited to those posts. It's evaluating really well. And we're currently out to recruitment for the Boston post. We're, we're anticipating that they'll, that they'll be popular posts, that the Lincoln post certainly were. And we're hoping to have that service up and running by the, by Christmas this year.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. In which case I'm going to move to a proposal that the Lincolnshire Partnership NHS Foundation Trust be thanked for their report and presentation on children and young people's mental health services, in particular the level of detail in the report, and that the committee be advised of any future developments in these services. Anything in regards to data, we'll pick up and ensure that we get out as well prior to the next meeting. So. Do I have a second for that proposal, please? Thank you, councillor Smith. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. That's supported. And once again, thank you to our presenters. I'll now move on to agenda item eight, older people, mental health. Yeah, councillor Parkin. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So we'll move to agenda item eight, older people, mental health and dementia services. This report is found on pages 87 to 96. And I'd like to welcome our presenters from the Lincolnshire Partnership NHS Foundation Trust. Chris Higgins again from Director of Operations, Steve Roberts, Associate Director of Operations for Older People and Fraughties Services. And if I can hand over to you just for a quick run through and we'll take questions at the end.
Thank you, councillor Mason. Thank you to the committee again for letting us come and speak about our services. So you've heard about our children and young people's services. We're now at the other end of the spectrum in terms of older people, mental health, but also dementia. And that's really important. And obviously, as we go through the, the question answer, dementia doesn't necessarily. dementia doesn't necessarily just affect older people. It is an all-age illness and all-age support offer that we provide. So again, much going off in this space, much more to do. And we've got some real ambitions around where we want to take our, particularly our dementia services in Lincolnshire. But I'll hand over to Steve. I can talk you through the highlights of the papers for a few minutes. And then again, we'll open up for questions.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chris. So like with Eve, I'll keep this brief. I won't repeat what was in the paper verbatim as that does set out basically the scope of services, which as Chris has just mentioned, is primarily complex mental health for people over 65 years of age, but all-age dementia. And that's across the range of community and inpatient services. So one of the unique features of the older people and frailty division is the entire care pathway sits within one division, which does offer some unique opportunities in terms of how we can develop our services and join that work up and try and minimise issues related to transition points. In there is also some headlines in terms of developments and also key challenges for the division. And also this scope of work via the Lincolnshire Dementia Transformation Programme Board, of which LPFT is the legal organisation. It also does draw attention to the fact that the previously presented paper by LPFT, adult community services, included small age service aspects, especially around the community transformation that does apply to older adult mental health. So we won't repeat them within this paper. So just very quickly, it would be better to provide a little bit of context and background in which them services are being delivered. Really, it's absolutely key that a lot of it over these past few years and still pushing forward as we come out of Covid is around optimising our service delivery within our resources and making sure that sort of the service elements and scope are expanded. So a key bit of that has been moving to seven-day services and being able to facilitate and support care closer to home, which has been a really key agenda across the organisation and the division in particular, especially in such a rural and dispersed county, supporting people in their communities and working with the PCNs to do that. But also working with system partners, that's something that is a very heavy element of, given the demographic we work with. So working with our other health and social care providers in terms of key agendas, such as the frailty agenda, virtual wards, end-of-life care in particular, where we're looking to join up care to optimise outcomes for our service users, whichever part of the system they happen to make contact with. And that's all within the context as well in trying to make the services more accessible. This is really key. Trying to break down referral barriers and linking with other services in the systems, we say to try and make sure that we have this no wrong door approach. Either it doesn't matter where somebody with a mental health problem or dementia touches the system, that they know who to get in contact with. And as part of that, we've certainly been trying to expand our accessibility in terms of advice as well. So no need for referrals, actually being able to contact us to have discussions. And that be from GPs, nursing homes, other system partners. So again, really trying to open up the doors to try and optimise the impact we can have with the resources that we have. And in terms of, I suppose, the broader context of that, that's all happening within Lincolnshire, which I'm sure everybody is aware is an aging county. We are above the national average age in Lincolnshire. And certainly in the next 20 years, as we're already in the trajectory, you're going to see a significant increase in the older adult population in Lincolnshire, circa 46%. And compared to a zero growth of working age adult, which presents dual challenges of both a static workforce and a significantly growing older adult population and with the conditions that come with that, in particular dementia and frailty. So these are some of the key issues. And trying to do that within two contexts, trying to deliver in the here and now and with increasing demand, but also keeping very much an eye on the future in terms of how we start to progress as a county, the preventative agenda, especially around dementia. If we don't want the projected figures to be realised, so at the moment they are projections, but if we don't start working now, which is a key bit of the agenda we're picking up, then we can change that future impact and hopefully move ourselves more towards a population health management model rather than, I suppose, we're still working in a very reactive way in terms of demand. So hopefully that provides a little bit of a context in terms of the paper that we provided. So I will stop there and take questions.
Okay, thank you. I've got Liz Ball first, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for the presentation. And it's encouraging to know of all the work that's taking place in the system. But from a health watch point of view, we've noted in the report that the waiting times for memory assessments are obviously not where you'd like them to be. So to be able to share a bit more information about how that is going to be reduced. And just adding on to that question, is that having any impact on patients being able to access medication to slow their cognitive decline if they are diagnosed with dementia? And how are you capturing any data on that? And is it adversely affecting the population of Lincolnshire? Thank you.
No, no, a very good and apt question. So yes, just a little bit of background to that, that what we saw through Covid, so the current situation in terms of service demands, we saw a significant accumulation of waits occur from early 2020 through mid-late 2021. And they started to plateau out into 2022, which we have seen since then. But we still have the backlog or a backlog that accumulated during the Covid pandemic due to obviously restricted access and delivery issues. Average waits at the moment are not where we want them to be. They do vary considerably by area and impacted by a number of factors. It is the increasing demand as well as the backlog from Covid. And also, you know, I think Chris touched on this, workforce challenges as well does impact on service capacity and delivery. So in terms of the impact on the individuals, absolutely. Does it have a potential impact? Yes, we would absolutely aspire to have diagnosis as timely as possible. And are we where we would like to be at the moment? No, we're not. Are we taking measures to address that? Absolutely. We are starting to look or have already started to look at different methods of service delivery to try and increase the modes of access to the service. Last year as well, for the first time, we managed, did some great work with the ICB and LPFT and secured additional funding for memory assessment work as dedicated memory assessment workers to actually increase the capacity. And we are starting to see the impacts of those in terms of waits and access. And we're also working with NHSEI around access and service delivery. Good news is that in Lincolnshire, we have started to see a recovery of the dementia diagnosis rate, which is a measure of the individuals with a diagnosis of dementia in the county. And we're actually, even whilst not where we need to be, are now above the national average. We were below the national average about 12 months ago and six months ago. And so we are starting to see some recovery within that system. We do put in place also waiting well workers that we've put in specifically because of this backlog of waits. So they're in place to make contact with those waiting, to check the priorities, see whether those individuals' needs have changed, to try and make sure that also, even whilst they're waiting, they can be signposted to support services. But in terms of the specific medication question, then the answer is yes. In terms of access to medication, that can only happen when a specific diagnosis occurs. Obviously, it is only for specific types of dementia, so that wouldn't apply to everybody. And again, we have work to do to get where we want to be. We do monitor outcomes. So like I said, we do have the waiting well workers to keep in contact. And certainly, as I said, that the resource development is heading towards the direction we want it to be. We're in the process of business planning for this year, where we're actually trying to get the service to a standalone service that is proportionate to the needs of Lincolnshire.
Okay, thank you. I've got councillor Stokes.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for the report as well. So it relates to page 91 and the demand and waiting times. I mean, statistics are statistics and we can hide behind percentages. So I'm just wondering what the numbers are behind those percentages. Because obviously 99% of the number, if we could have the numbers, that'd be great. I'd be quite interested in that. Thank you.
Thanks. So where was that? Page 91? Just spare with me one second.
Yeah, page 91, it relates to older adult mental health in that first paragraph.
Oh, right. Yeah, okay. So just to quickly talk through that bit then. So in terms of our services, so they basically break down across two major lines. So as I mentioned, older adult mental health and dementia. So for older adult mental health, so those presenting over the age of 65 with complex mental health needs, actually, our response times are very, very good. So we have, and I do have the figures here. So our average waiting times for a mental health appointment are under two weeks. That they constitute about, so at the moment, we have about 1,138 people with mental health needs on our caseloads. Actually, our waits for mental health are minimal, literally probably less than 100 in terms of mental health, where we reach 99% attainment of the 18-week target and around 96% attainment of the four-week target. So in terms of the mental health response, that's not an issue within the service, that the response for that is very good. They tend to be higher complexity cases, therefore tend to be prioritised by the community mental health team resource. The knock-on impact of the higher acuity and therefore the higher priority of the mental health referrals is that the dementia assessment referrals, which are routine, that they tend to be the ones that then accumulate as a consequence of both services being delivered out of the same resource, which is important to understand. So these are not two separate teams. The same teams deliver the mental health and also the dementia assessment work. So there is a degree of competition between the referrals in terms of risk and priority.
I think I'm just coming on the back of that. I think that's really an important thing to just to recognise at the moment. We know that we've been doing a lot around our adult services. We spoke about previously, heard about the work that we're doing around our children and young people's services. This is our next real area of focus and hopefully investment is around our older people and certainly our dementia services. And that tension you hear there between what in essence is a single team offering two different functions and older people's mental health and dementia function means that we have to prioritise cases accordingly depending on the risk. What we're intending to do, and we write proposals at the moment, is for investment into those services. And Steve just alluded to it earlier, is ideally where we would like to get to is as a separate service. So a specialist older people's mental health service and a separate dedicated dementia service. And that's certainly our ambition at the organisation is to drive that agenda forward. And hopefully that's where we will get to. So yes, we then will make sure that we've got, and we can balance the resource more effectively. So I hope that's helpful.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ireland?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm not totally sure. I picked up the same paragraph as councillor Stokes. So I'm not totally sure whether the question I was going to ask has been answered or not, because it may well be to do with the difference between mental health and dementia. But it's clear in the statement there that there's 4% that sort of fall well outside the 4% four weeks response time. And in some cases run up to the 18-week time. So there's a particularly small proportion that seem to be quite difficult in terms of getting through to referrals. It may well be the just difficult patients that don't want to actually engage. But is there a particular reason for that? And is it something that is easily addressed?
Yes, so obviously without going in or without having the detail of the data in front, but what you'll often find when you're looking at data of that nature and you start to examine it, certainly for the mental health pathway in particular, that often that within that 4%, there are sometimes sort of data issues or duplications on the clinical system that count. And always you say slightly more complex cases that it's not unusual for people to be referred who then actually don't wish to engage. And as you say, that then there's the complexities of getting sort of involvement within them. Certainly what we can say is that we haven't seen any sort of clinical incidents or escalation of risks specifically associated with those. Sometimes as well, paradoxically, the longer waits may actually be the lower risk and lower acuity patients and referrals, because they're the ones that when the team are prioritising, depending on their capacity, it may be those that are actually deemed to be safer and with lower level needs that then wait longer. Why is people with higher level needs take priority? So there isn't a correlation between how long somebody waits or those falling outside and their level of risk as such. And certainly that is part also of the triage process. So every referral that comes into the team, the team manager or the team leader looks at reviews and triages that process and that referral. And that can also include getting in contact with them to have an initial discussion to see what the nature of their needs are and whether they are urgent or not. So again, there's a whole rash of reasons behind sort of the different times in response to referrals. But certainly as a pathway as a whole for mental health, the response is very, very good. And we haven't seen, certainly that I'm aware of, of any escalation of risk related to those in the longer waiting times for that particular pathway. I hope that helps. If not, please say and I'll try and clarify a little bit more.
No, it helps. Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Kendrick?
Thank you, Chairman. Again, coming back to page 91. I was just wondering about the pilot that's being done over the next 12 months as regards a model of care, whether we'll get a report on how that turns out. And secondly, on the same page, the investigation into the number of inpatient beds. Again, I see that there's a modelling project going on there with the ICB. I was just wondering when we might hear the outcome of that as well. Thanks, Chairman.
Happy to start just on the second point in terms of the bed modelling work. We're linking in that to the current pilot we talked around in terms of the temporary closure of the Manthorpe Ward. And we've talked to the committee earlier this year about that in terms of the formal pilot we're doing around our dementia home treatment service. So we've got a temporary closure of Manthorpe Ward and we're formally piloting our dementia home treatment service over the course of the next 12 months, starting back in July this year. So as part of that, we're really keen to understand the future bed requirements. As Steve spoke about there, is that we know that there's an aging population. There's a growing number of people who are falling to that older people category in terms of who would need support from the services we're speaking out today. That said, what we do know is if we put really effective community services in place, less people, fewer people need to go into hospital. So that's what we're trying to work out at the minute now. We have been engaged with some wider system work around what our future bed modelling requirements might look like. And the early indications for older people's services suggest that if we did nothing and we didn't change any of our service models, in about five years from now, we might need five additional beds. What we need to test now through the next few months is to say, so doing nothing, but what if we do something? And what is that something? And if we put community service in place to support people earlier, get the preventative work right, then we might not need those beds in the future. And if we do, then we can plan for them. But that's what we're just working through at the minute. We've just had some early kind of data that's come out of that work and we really need to stress test that and to make sure we're really clear on the assumptions we're making around future service models.
Thank you. I've got councillor Mackinson Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We heard earlier that children can phone up at any time of the day and night and weekends. Is there a similar service that elderly people can access in the same way? And the other question I was going to ask as well is how does this dovetail into the wellbeing services that district councils carry out on behalf of the county council?
Yes, so in terms of helpline support, we have a mental health helpline that we work with a partner and organisation, Mental Health Matters, and they provide a mental health helpline support for all adults over the age of 18, including our older people's services. So anybody can ring that up, they'll get advice on the phone and they'll either provide instant advice or signposting to our other services. And if there's a particular crisis or something, a particular urgent mental health need, then they'll connect into our wider service in the organisation. So that is available. What we tend to do around our dementia support is try to link in with some of the national charities and specialists around dementia support. So because there's such a good- So because there's such a good presence in that, in that voluntary sector and the charity sector for dementia support, Alzheimer's Society and others, we tend to work in partnership with them around what we can offer. Now, what I would say is there's a load more we can do in that space. Our transformation programme that we're working on, that's mentioned in the paper for our dementia services is absolutely about how do we make sure that people have got telephone lines, online support, access to support groups in the local communities? We're doing, we've seen a real benefit of that for our adult mental health pathways. And now we're trying to roll that, that kind of model but adapted for our different car of people that we support. And certainly it's an area that we know we need to do a lot more in. And again, and linking back to earlier parts of the conversation, if we're going to try to stop the need or prevent, reduce the need for all that growing population from a mental health and dementia perspective, we really need to put the preventative work in place now so that it doesn't manifest in, in, in mental ill health and other types of associated problems later on. So absolutely more, more to do in that space, but there are some bits in place at the moment.
How does it dovetail in with the wellbeing services that are provided around the county? Please.
Well, I think what I would say is I'm, I might have to come back to you on this one, as Steve can add to it. Part of our programmes of work, we're connecting in with our local authority colleagues and, and ICB colleagues, but specifically the wellbeing supporters, I'm not sure. What we do have is a dementia support service that's commissioned through the local authority that provides that post dementia support. But that's the area we really want to develop and grow because we know we have got a limited support offer for pre-diagnosis and post-diagnosis just because of capacity. So, so yeah, so I might have to come back to you specifically on how we're specifically linking with those services.
Okay, thank you. I haven't got any other speakers, so I've just got a couple of questions myself. I think some of this has been alluded to, but I'm going to ask it anyway. On page 90, the fourth paragraph, you have stated that given the scale of the ageing population and people experiencing dementia in Lincolnshire, that locality based services are insufficient. So can you please expand on what opportunities you are exploring to tackle this and if there are any associated timescales or funding available?
Yes, so I'll, I'll start off then if Chris, so absolutely. And as, as mentioned and as also in my introduction, obviously the biggest challenge that we face is, is the population of Lincolnshire and the growth. So in terms of work both via the dementia programme board, a key part of the programme board work is around how do we link together existing resources? So as we know that finances are limited, but there are probably more resources out there than we are currently optimising if we link together. So certainly that's part of the key work about breaking down the barriers between ourselves and other health and social care providers and also engaging with the VCSCE community as well. So as part of the dementia programme board, a key bit of that work is that we're developing a VCSCE subgroup where we're looking at and currently mapping all existing resources that are supporting dementia in particular around the county. Because there is, there are resources out there, but a lot of times people don't know about them and they're not linked together. So certainly the idea is, is that we, we're looking for a more collaborative mindset there to look towards a sort of a, a collaborative network of services with a no wrong door approach. So if somebody touches base with either, any of those services, that they can then navigate through the whole range of services. And certainly that's a key piece of work for the board. So I'd say the, the first order of work is about optimising and mapping resources already out there and making sure they're linked together, know who each other's, who each other is and utilising those so that service users can pass through them pathways seamlessly. Another part is about educating the existing resources around the systems. So a lot of times it's not that we need more resources, but we need people within those to be aware and trained in conditions such as dementia so that accessibility to them is optimised. So often what we find is people can't access services because people don't feel sufficiently trained to manage or the service access routes aren't set up for individuals with certain levels of needs and problems. So there's also a key bit of work around training staff around the county and across services to try and maximise accessibility. Then the third part of that is also, as Chris mentioned, is the business planning around actually developing right sized dementia aligned resources. By doing that, it would also right size our older adult mental health resources. So by investing into our dementia resources specifically, it means our remaining resources then will have the capacity to manage the mental health agenda. So within business planning at the moment, we are moving to a proposal for a standalone service for memory assessment that is based on forward looking projections of populations for Lincolnshire in order to meet the standards of care we know that are aligned to that. So it's not a singular action, it is one of, of joining up existing resources, training staff so those resources are accessible, then investment in the right place for the specialist aspect of the resources to meet the known needs.
Okay, thank you. And then my final question is, how are these services impacted by recruitment and retention challenges?
Do you want to go first, Chris?
I mean, I can start, I think that, and you probably can contribute from our kind of dementia specific, a bit, a bit like the conversation we had earlier is that there's no service, I think untouched by the recruitment challenges that we, we have in the trust. And I say we don't think, well, I know we're not alone in that. I think, you know, as a, as a national, particularly about mental health services, I think it's been really, I'd say very fortunate that we've, we've had investment into services, but everywhere's had investment into services at all the same time. So we've got growth and everybody's trying to catch up with their recruitment. So, you know, it's a really positive thing. I don't want to come across it's not, but then it has its challenges that, that come with that. And we're trying to diversify, I think that's, that's the thing. We, we're looking at international recruiters, recruitment, as I said before, we're looking at trying to develop and grow our own workforce, looking at alternative roles, both ones that are available in other areas we recruit directly in. But also we've got a kind of grow your own approach where we've developed our own internal house, in-house training programme so that can develop our own staff on the job. So again, just trying to get people with roots in Lincolnshire to come and train and work in Lincolnshire. So, so, you know, I can't say that we're not, that the dementia and older people's services are not touched by it. Yes, they are, and we still have, have challenge across a number of areas. But again, we're starting to see some positive signs in the way that recruitment is, is starting to take effect. So I don't know if you want to add anything specific, Steve?
No, I mean, I mean, yeah, just, just to reiterate that absolutely, sorry, in terms of the, your, your specific question, do the impact? Yes, they do, because obviously, you know, these are not large teams that we're talking about. So if they lose one or two staff members, it can significantly impact their capacity. And it's, it's not then just about the vacancy, it's also the period of recruitment. So it can have quite a, a significant, and we do see that. So when we look across our services and we talk about things such as, as waiting times, usually what you can do is you can map them not only to demand, but also to, to staffing capacity during those periods of time. As Chris said though, there are green shoots and certainly ourselves, we've been having success, I mentioned earlier that we had, had investment in some additional workers last year. We piloted a new type of worker that we trained in-house and recruitment to them post has actually been very successful. And that's a model we want to expand. We've also been attracting remote workers, especially in the, in the guise of consultants from outside of county. And we do think as well that what that's showing us, that if we could invest in a dedicated dementia service, there are actually people out there who want to work in a dedicated service and not part of a generic CMHT dealing with all conditions. So we also feel that the model we're proposing also has quite considerable attraction in terms of recruitment for those people who want to make that their professional sort of work focus. So yep, challenges are ongoing, but as Chris says, some, some green shoots there as well.
Thank you. Councillor Mackinson Saunders, you want to just come in quickly?
Yes, just very quickly, please. A lot of people want to keep their family, their husband or wife at home, but they would like a bit of respite care. And that really is only available to people who are reasonably well off because it's £1,200 or so in a nursing home. Is there any, any way we can help support people who just need a bit of respite, be able to have a bit of respite care, please?
Yeah, so, so as you said, I mean, obviously, you know, I think respite care sadly is one of those things. Certainly I, I've worked in dementia care for 30 years and sometimes a baby thrown out with the bath water. And over the last 20 years in particular, we've seen facilities like daycare, respite care diminish. But certainly you're right that whilst the acute ward is, is absolutely not the right place for people who need that break, you know, because it is a very particular environment, that that support to give people the break, whether it be in the traditional respite care, as, as you mentioned, in terms of say a week, but also sometimes you find that services to support even people getting a couple of hours, getting a break, some night, some night sitter. So starting to look at the ranges of, of services that can support individuals, carers who are so fundamental to, to keeping people with dementia well and their long term outcomes is really pivotal. And I think that that's a key bit of work that we, that we address in a couple of ways. So one, I think I mentioned in the paper that the expansion of our services has been supporting people to access, sort of to access respite care, because sometimes there is that administrative aspect in terms of accessing and knowing where to go in the system. So it is our role in increasing that advice and also making the case that it's required and supportive. I think there are routes we can take there as well in terms of, you know, potential funding to support respite care. But also it's about us taking the lead with our system partners to develop, as Chris has mentioned earlier, that broader offer. And respite care has, is an aspect that comes up in all of the discussions, both with our health and social care partners, or our social care partners in particular, but also with our VCSCE partners who are keen to expand into the space that provides that care closer to home, that respite closer to home, even if that's not always in the traditional remit of a week at a time. But certainly you're absolutely right, respite is massively underestimated and the benefits of keeping the carers healthy and refreshed and able to cope absolutely is pivotal and makes such a massive difference. And is, is something that as a system, as a county is on the radar, but that we need to be doing much, much better and is something that we're certainly pushing to progress.
Okay, thank you. In which case I'm now going to move to a proposal that the Lincolnshire Partnership NHS Foundation Trust be thanked for their report and presentation on older adult mental health and dementia services, in particular the level of detail in the report, and that the committee be advised of any future developments in these services. Do I have a second after that proposal, please? Thank you, councillors Mackinson Saunders. All those in favour, please show. Thank you, that's supported. Once again, thank you to our presenters.
Okay.
We'll now move on to agenda item nine, the Humber Acute Services Review. This item is found on pages 97 to 105 of the agenda pack, and I'll now hand over to Simon.
Thank you, thank you, chairman. Rather than focusing on the content of the programme, I think I'll just focus on the, if you like, process and background issues, which include the establishment of the joint committee. Since the paper has been, has been issued, the first meeting of the joint committee has now been confirmed on the 17th of October. So that is going to take place in, in Scunthorpe. And I believe appointments have been issued, issued for that. The, the, the second point, moving on to the involvement of this committee, is that it has been confirmed that the, the review team will engage with this committee. And the committee has previously put that down as a marker. There was a little bit of confusion maybe at the beginning of this couple of weeks ago, which is perhaps the reason this paper was drafted, but we've now had confirmation that they will be attending and perhaps if not on the 4th of October, but certainly for the 8th of November, but not quite finalised yet. And the third thing, which I suppose is kind of reverting back to the content in a way, is that the final of the three briefing events is taking place this evening on teams between six and seven PM. The first, the first event was last week, councillor Mackinson Saunders attended from this committee. There were a couple of other county councillors in attendance, but I can recirculate that if, if others wish to join that meeting this afternoon. I won't say any more there, but I'm, obviously will answer any questions. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Simon. Before I bring anyone in, I, yeah, there was some difficulties at first. I think initially we were being told they had no reason to come and see us as an individual committee because they were the joint committee and therefore we had a little bit of back and forth for a while, but they have now agreed. I mean, what I will say is in my opinion, I believe we as a committee need to be responding to this consultation, because although for those of us in the east of the county, this probably could be viewed as quite positive in the way that they're looking at the changes, the same cannot be said for those in the north of the county such as Gainsborough. They will be obviously substantially affected and I feel we as a committee need to ensure we are representing their views. I also feel this is reinforced when you consider that the make up of the joint committee could be viewed as weighted against any view North Lincolnshire may have against these changes due to the lack of alteration to the associated sites. So at the moment it's weighted very much so against them. So that's my view and I think we need to continue representing those views with this committee. So any comments from anyone, please? Councillor Mackinson Saunders?
Thank you. I did find it very helpful, I found it quite reassuring as well and keep battling on because it will affect people over in Gainsborough and stuff. But luckily in East Lindsay, I think we seem to come out of it relatively unscathed. But most of our patients in, in this, in the northern part of East Lindsay do actually use Grinsby Hospital all the time. And it's really important that we know what's going on. And there has been a lack of contact between us in the past, and I think that's a huge oversight. So thank you very much indeed.
Thank you. Any further comments? No, in which case I'm going to make the proposal that the date of the first planned meeting of the Lincolnshire and Humber Joint Health overview and scrutiny committee on the 17th of October in Scunthorpe be noted. And secondly, that the offer of attendance by the Humber and North Yorkshire ICB at the meeting of this committee should be pursued. Do I have a second after that proposal, please? Thank you, councillor Smith. All those in favour, please show. That's supported, thank you. And then the final item is the Work Programme. Again, I'll hand over to you, Simon.
Thank you, thank you, chairman. The, in addition to the usual list of items, we've got a sort of proposal in the papers that the committee confirms the status of the consultation that the committee has previously responded to on paediatric services at Pilgrim Hospital. So there is a request for the committee to formally confirm that that was, that, that that consultation does not represent a substantial development. I won't read all the words out on page 107, just moving to the Work Programme itself, which begins on page 109. One of the things that should have been listed on the Work Programme is that although we've had three, we've had childrens, we've had adults and older adults, there is one other area from LPFT, which is learning disability and autism, and one or two other specialist services. And I need to check whether that is actually coming on the 4th or the 8th, but that's certainly the, the, the final, final element of the LPFT presentations. Just on the 4th of October, it's, it's quite a heavy agenda. The first item itself is covering a number of things, all the way from A and E services, A and E services right the way through to patient and the impact on patient discharge on those services, through to urgent treatment centres, the NHS 111 service, as well as the, I suppose for all of those, the restoration and recovery of those services. We've also got, and it's Claire Robold, who'll be back doing both of these again, NHS winter planning and a report on the, from the ICB on engagement. And we may, as partly because I forgot to, when we split the items, forgot to put the mental health one. We may also have the Humber one, but it looks like it is more likely to be November for that. So it could be that it's just the consultation document, which I, rather than having as an item, perhaps it's just suggested that that's circulated and then the item is brought forward in November. And then the committee would then be able to finalise its response at the December meeting, which would still be within the three month period. So that, hopefully I've not confused people why those dates, but if there are any questions, I'll, I'll answer them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions? No, so I'll take it as we're all happy with it. And we're happy to confirm the committee's view on the proposed changes to paediatric services also. Okay, I'll propose that. Do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Smith. All those in favour, please show. Thank you, that's supported. Okay, in which case that brings the meeting to the end. Thank you all very much for your attendance and for taking part in. Thank you all very much for your attendance and for taking part in the debate, thank you.